The board order is 7:13. What do we have? Can you? You've done what? Okay.
Hello? Susan, Marty, talk.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm here.
Can you hear Russ?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, we can, Marty, thank you.
All right. You can hear me too. Okay, great.
Agenda. Do I have it in here?
Well, I have it in.
I've got it in pink or in here someplace.
Okay. June 25th, 2020, it is 7:15 PM. I'll start with a call to order. And again, like we did last week, we're gonna have to do individuals. So if you would start in the corner with Jens.
Jens Bergen.
Roger Warren.
Rich Kanong.
Tom McGinn.
Todd Redway.
And we have Marty and Susan joining us remotely.
Yes. Susan Rock.
So.
Marty.
We have approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for May 28th, 2020. We have a time for public comment. We have four pending applications. 35 DMR Drive, a plenary site plan review. Item number two is Raymond Aker's subdivision amendment and shoreline zone application. Item number three is Monique and Paul Robitaille's subdivision pre-application. Item number four is the Wellness Center, a plenary site plan review determination of completeness. Under land use ordinances, we have a discussion about a proposal to establish uniform construction and dimensional standards for commercial driveways. Then we have other business. And then we will stop and go home.
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Tom and seconded by Roger. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Kurt Jens Bergen, aye.
Roger Warren, aye.
Rich Kanong, aye.
Tom McGinn, aye.
Susan?
Susan Rock, aye.
Marty?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We have approval of the minutes for May 28th, 2020.
The move we approve as written?
Is there a second?
All right, I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? Starting with Jens.
Not all four vote enough.
Oh, okay.
Is it?
Roger?
Outstanding, aye.
Tom McGinn, aye.
Tom McGinn, aye. Susan?
Aye.
Aye.
And Marty, you said aye?
Aye.
Thank you. There are five ayes and one abstention. Public comment. This is the time in which if you are a member of the public and you want to comment on something that is not on the agenda, you can bring it to us and we can start working on it.
Excuse me, is Jeff Perrin?
Yes, sir.
When you called, did you say? I'm sorry, I can just barely hear you. What did you just say? You said public comment?
This is for public comment if you do not have a comment about, if they're not on the agenda. If there's something that's on the agenda, I ask that you would hold your comments until we get to that point.
Okay.
Are there, is there any public comment? Hearing none, we will move on. Pending applications, item number one, 35 DMR Drive, a plenary site plan review, determination of completeness, proposal to construct a 4,251 square foot metal building complementing an existing 3,440 square foot commercial building on a 2.83 acre site located at 35 DMR Drive, tax map one, lot 1D in the BI District. Gary Martin is the owner and applicant and Amy McNally is the applicant's agent. Amy, you're up.
Good evening. Do you want me to front for the camera?
Yes, please. Take the witness chair.
I suppose that's how it is. Last evening, the board had requested an updated plan, which we have since provided. My understanding of the application, we've provided everything as required under the application and for determination of completeness.
Staff concurs.
The application is complete?
Yep. The only thing I have outstanding is I have Atlantic Resource Consultants who are doing the peer review that we discussed.
Okay.
Hopefully, they'll have it. Of course, I won't be here tomorrow, but maybe Jay still has it by then. He can see it.
Okay. So we'll have that before the next meeting?
That's what I.
Okay. I hope. I would be very disappointed if we did not.
So, Mr. General, what we need is a vote of determination of completeness and scheduling of a public hearing if one agrees with staff.
Were there any waivers that were requested that we need to look at?
I don't recall any waivers. It was the discussion that we had before was on the status of parking and whether or not the applicant needed to pay for parking lot. Because these were two more spaces that were being created. And I'm just looking through the application right now. And the only waivers that were, oh. Those were, did not apply, was the planning schedule for landscape plans for planting and impact study and groundwater study and market analysis, which we don't ask for, and fiscal impact analysis, which we don't ask for unless it's a significant project. There are no state or federal approvals that are required as part of this project. The only state, the only activity the applicant has had with the state agencies was when he was exploring the possibility of using Route 1 as his primary ingress and entrance, which did not meet driveway separation or the entrance separation DOT requires, and therefore was denied. Otherwise, the waivers would be for landscape plan. The applicant is not proposing cutting vegetation out within the buffer along DMR or along Route 1. Waiver is a traffic study, which staff would concur with, and waiver of groundwater study, staff would agree with that.
So are you gonna, if I understand this correctly, there's not gonna be any landscaping that you need to do?
That's fine, as long as they don't cut that buffer in front. That's correct. The buffer will, the plan is for the buffer to be under served.
Okay. Does the planning, yeah, does the board have any questions that we need to address before we determine completeness?
I don't have any.
Roger?
I'm good.
Marty?
So I will move that we deem this, yeah, the application complete.
And I'll second that.
Motion was made by Tom McGinn and seconded by Jens Bergen to deem the application complete. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote?
Jens Bergen, aye.
Roger Warren, aye.
Rich Kanong, aye.
Tom McGinn, aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Your application is complete. We can move forward to a public hearing.
So I will move that we schedule it to next meeting?
Can we do that?
Yeah.
We have the public hearing, absolutely.
We have to advertise that in the time.
I am not saying.
Right.
But it's two weeks, so we'll be able to do it till Monday.
It's 10 days, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, we have a different.
We lowered it because we're running into that problem, so it's.
So it's seven. It's the last of 14 days, correct? Yes.
And with the new digital format, I don't need three days like I used to.
Right. It can be done.
I could put it in Monday and it'll be advertised by Thursday.
Perfect.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded?
At the next meeting, whenever that.
That will be July 11th.
July 11th, I believe?
July 9th.
July 9th, okay.
I'll second that.
Roger, seconds.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Warren, aye.
Kanong, aye.
Jen, aye.
Susan?
Yes, aye.
Marty?
Aye.
It is unanimous for July 11th. We will, don't go away. You just sit up on the agenda.
Thank you, I will.
The next item on the agenda, Raymond Aker's subdivision amendment and shoreline zone application. Proposed amendment to alter the approved property lines between lots 503 and 503A on tax map 30, as well as a reduction in the 75-foot shoreline stream protection setback from Goth Mill Brook Trilogy on tax map 30, lot 503A, off of Black Dog Road in the R2 and SP districts. Nicholas Raymond is owner and applicant and Amy McNally is the applicant's agent. First, well, first off, does the board have anything for the applicant? I know I did, but I need to find.
Well, I do. I also have a few points to address as well. Based on the staff notes I recently received.
Did I get your staff notes?
I got them yesterday.
No, did you get mine? Did not get yours.
Wait, what?
Don't you give me staff notes?
Well, I'd have timed her about these ones this time, so. In typical course, I would, but that's cool.
You realize that's something.
I do, I do.
I had questions about some of the waivers that we were looking for. Can you find where the list of waivers is?
This is just showing as built.
That's correct. There should be a contrast between as built and as planned on that newest plan, which was newly submitted.
We gave one of each.
Right, so there's one of each. So, and I can kind of, a little bit of background. We had originally submitted the amendment to the subdivision plan, which is required to adjust one of the setbacks, well, both setbacks. We need to amend the subdivision plan at any event. Initially, there was some question as to whether or not this board had the authority to grant the buffer approachment, which we have, I think, since determined at the May 28th meeting. There was a lot of conversation about it, but I think since then, it's been determined that this board does have the authority to do that. So that's what was transpired with May 28th meeting. And then in June 11th, we had a lot of discussions about the circumstances, special and unique under section 8645 that we're citing too. And so since then, we've amended the plan to show the board what they saw at the site walk, where the building is, and where it was originally planned in the building envelope and the shift that transpired during construction. And so with, so at the tail end of last meeting, after the board had followed its discussion about special and unique circumstances and the expectations and deliberation, we were requested to file a shoreline application, which is a little bit more extensive than the original application that we filed. We did file that by the Monday deadline, as requested by the planner, and did include additional information like the updated plan and some additional information from our landscape architect to really outline the parameters as required in the application to discuss the environmental impact. And that's all required as part of the application. The waivers included additional plan details that would otherwise typically be part of site plan reviews, stormwater advantage facilities, different details. We've asked that those be made because, given the circumstances and the picture that we're looking at of the exact approachment, we thought they would be, not necessarily relevant in the circumstance, given the window that we're looking at and the information that's been provided by our landscape architect to address the precise approachment that's issued here, not necessarily this entire subdivision, which is what site plan review applications are meant to address. So we have requested several waivers to that effect. Other than that, what we haven't requested a waiver for, we have provided to the board based on the checklist. And so we are looking for a determination and a vote of completeness tonight. Again, this is our third meeting on this application. We've really tried to work expeditiously to get this together, and it's a really time-sensitive application for this applicant. So at this time, we are looking for the board to deem it complete. Of course, we would absolutely invite any feedback on our waiver request and take those obviously under consideration. But at this time, that's our request for tonight. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions or open discussion about those waiver requests, but we're really looking at the substance of the application and for termination of completeness, so that a public hearing can be scheduled and that additional feedback from the board can be received at that point.
And that's what I'm trying to find is the waivers. There are a couple of waivers that.
It would be on the section 5. I'm sorry, I should have pointed you to that while I was speaking. You're getting the wrong one.
Yeah.
You see, in the book I have, I don't have any of the waivers under section 5.
It might be, is that the previous application? Is that the first application?
It might very well be.
So we submitted a newer application?
That's what I sent to digital.
Right.
Would you like my copy to work for?
Let me see, I have it in here. Resell the. Okay.
It says to shoreline zoning application.
And we did receive the feedback from the staff yesterday on the waivers, but of course, that's too short of a turnaround for us to get any additional information from the board at this point. But again, for the complete, we're actually happy to, but for the completeness of the application, we think it's still right for a vote on that at this point.
Okay, I've got the waiver question. Okay, so the first one you asked us for was the topographic survey showing the pre-existing and fill elevations at the house site. I'd like to know what they're gonna look like afterward. They're all of a sudden gone. What's that?
That's why we didn't.
No, that's okay, that's okay. And that's correct, because it will be changed. The fill was put in there so the street rockers could get up to the house and things like that. And that's precisely what Mr. Doe's plan, he has submitted, there's a preliminary plan in the application for landscape. That's exactly what that plan will consider. He could certainly speak more to that. But his plan is going to be prospective in what this hillside will look like, what this will look like in the future. That's precisely what is meant by that, absolutely. So I think you're right, past is kind of, you know, what it did look like at one point is less relevant.
Yeah, because I'm, you know, I don't need a topo map of what it looks like. I need to know what. In particular, that section on the back corner, because there was a lot of disturbance back.
And that's precisely, right.
You moved the house 19 feet, but you've probably got another 19 or 20 feet worth of disturbance in this order.
And we don't disagree, I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
No, no, that's going back, going back down toward the stream. And that's what has me concerned, because between the change to the topography there and the runoff, because there's bound to create an effect on runoff. I don't know.
And it's precisely an issue that will be addressed with remedial landscaping and a plan to that effect. And in addition to landscaping, also gutter, dripage, those kind of water flow measures that are also part of the building plan, those would be part of any plan.
But we don't have that yet.
Well, we have a preliminary plan with a planning scheme and those kind of things. That's precisely what we provided for in the application. That, of course, can be amended with feedback from the board, but again, with regard to completeness of the application, we provided this board what has been asked for under the application.
Okay.
And that's what, again, that's what we're kind of, our goal is here tonight. But again, we certainly welcome that feedback from the board, and that's exactly what we appear.
And I will concede the fact that asking for the waiver does make the application complete. It doesn't mean we'll grant the waiver. But it does mean that we have been provided with the information we need. I just wanted.
That's precise. And again, that's why we would certainly welcome that feedback. But again, for timing purposes and hoping to get some momentum here for Mr. Raymond, we're hoping to get, you know, some public input soon and maybe a determination of this board sooner or later, under the circumstances.
Roger, do you have any questions?
No, we've got someone always requesting it too.
Yeah, there were 12 to 13 waivers.
A lot of them kind of fall under the same umbrella, whether it's details on the plan. So essentially, it's lighting plan, building plan, stormwater report, waiver of fire chief and public works director, waiver of DEP permit, because that's kind of part before the course, the DEP has directed us to get the shoreline zoning before we go back to them. And then the certain details of the site plan is what I was talking about before, about, you know, if you're looking at a subdivision, the details of that site plan are more comprehensive than details of an approachment area that we're talking about here. So that was the gist of our waiver. Not to say we don't need a site plan, we of course need a site plan, but it doesn't need to encompass all of the details that the original subdivision did, which was the purpose behind that waiver.
So, questions by the board? Marty, any questions?
I just, everything was also there, like we're saying about a 2:1 ratio of disturbance on the planning or anything else.
I wish I could control the volume on other people. I can't control it on this one. That is here.
Am I too loud?
No, that's good, Marty.
Nope, that's good. It's technology on my side that's messing it up. Okay, go ahead and repeat your question, Marty.
I was just looking on, like you said, the proposed, um, plannings or anything else, because the fines were so big, but turned out in the same, that you have to use a 2: 1 ratio for replacement, or what are we replacing it with?
Yeah, that's what's really important right now. If you don't have an idea of how much, what's the material, how much material are we gonna be? And also, we're gonna discuss, and we had discussed in the field, whether or not we pull back some of that fill. Right now, there's no attempt to do that, whether it was gonna be a retaining wall or, if I'm not mistaken, one of the things that you folks are concerned about is you're only going through the expense of the board, so it's not gonna be inclined to proceed, yeah, to approve this. But right now, it's very nervous.
Well, and.
It is, but to Amy's point, we have enough information to make a decision. There's no guarantee that that's a favorable decision, but there's enough information to make a decision.
And we very well could, you know, it could be subject to certain requirements or provide that.
So we can say that, you know, I think, from that point, we can say that the application itself is complete.
And we're hearing this feedback, and we've read the staff note, and we're conscious of that, and that's not lost on us. And we understand that this isn't a substantive decision, and we certainly, again, we welcome that feedback from the board, but as far as a procedural question, I think that's just a little different to your point.
Yeah, we have to remember, it's just a determination of completeness. It doesn't mean that we're going along with it. We're just, we have all of the information necessary to decide one way or the other. And I think we do have enough information to make that decision, but that's just my opinion. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it.
So I move that we deem the application complete.
I'll second that.
Okay. Susan motioned and Marty seconded to deem the application complete. Is there any discussion by the board?
My only issue is, I don't wanna start some more calls, but the landscape.
I can't hear you, Tom, can you?
I'm sorry, the landscaping plan is pretty, it's a little vague. It doesn't, even though there is some landscaping plans, it'll need a lot more work.
And that goes to the staff notes point.
Yeah, so I just have to make that statement.
Sure. Understood.
I'll know more if we can.
If we were to get a more detailed one before.
We can certainly supply that, and like I said, any approval or consideration could be subject to that. That's, we're open to that.
Absolutely.
That's not lost on us.
Susan, any questions?
No, I'm good to call it complete.
Tom?
I'm most seconded.
Complete, yeah.
Jens?
I concur.
Okay. All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Aye.
Warren, aye.
Kanong, aye.
Ken, aye.
Susan said yes. What about you, Marty?
Yes.
You said aye. You did say aye.
Marty?
Marty said aye? Okay, sorry, Marty, I didn't hear you. It is unanimous. The application is complete. The next step? Just go to a public hearing?
Public hearing, yep.
Same date coming?
Yep.
Same date? July 9th.
It's been like four weeks in a row.
Well, it's public hearing.
You guys aren't taking me yet, huh?
Not yet.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody make a motion.
I'm making a motion, all public hearing.
Second, next meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded for a public hearing on July 9th. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Bergen, aye.
Warren, aye.
Kanong, aye.
Tom, aye again.
Susan?
Rock, aye.
Marty?
A, aye.
It is unanimous. We will see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Yeah.
The one that I.
Right.
I have that extension.
Yeah.
Right? That's right.
This is because I, this is like a month ago.
Yeah.
We've only seen this thing.
Okay.
Because there's also.
Yeah, I think it's been.
Earl, come on back.
Okay.
We're moving on. We're dealing with just the shoreline zoning application right now. We're not dealing with the amendment to the subdivision.
Correct.
Just dealing with the shoreline zone right now. Okay? Because the other one is immaterial until, unless this is decided.
That's right.
Unless this works, it's immaterial.
Okay.
Because if you're gonna move the building, you might as well move it out of the setback too. Because it's a kick that kicks it into the, into the opposite property.
The next item is Monique and Paul Robitaille's subdivision pre-application. A proposal to subdivide an existing combined residential commercial facility into three residential units with associated parking and driveway on a 4.4 acre parcel, tax map 17, lot 14, located at 757 Limerick Road in the R1 District. Monique and Paul Robitaille are the owner applicants. Paul told me he was not going to be here. He did not realize that he had to be here. I told him that we would discuss the site walk that we had today and convey our thoughts to you, and that he could contact you to find out what we were thinking.
I'll send him a word. I want to write it.
Yep, and that would be fine. The biggest, I think the biggest issue, and I don't know how the rest of you felt, but the biggest issue I had is where's the road?
Yeah, we need a service.
He does not know where that road is, what the boundary points of that road are. He's not, he thought at first it might be the stake that is in the ground, but then he tried to say that the trees are in the center of the right of way. If the trees are in the center of the right of way, then the right of way runs through his neighbor's house. So I don't think that's quite the case.
We need to have.
We we need to have something definitive.
Can I ask something? Um, I didn't get out to that sidewalk, uh, in time, I did, are we talking about the, uh, the property just before, um, just after MG Lane?
Yeah.
When you take a left?
Yeah.
And it's a very, very narrow driveway going in? Okay.
Yes, it goes all the way back, he's going to sign out there for snazzy bet, and that goes all the way back.
All the way back. Well, I went in there and there's nobody there, but I saw the basic layout, and funny about the road.
The road goes from there, it cuts across the property and goes out to-
Maplewood.
Maplewood on the other side, because he he doesn't, he can't get a road-
After the parking lot, after the-
It will come into the parking lot, what it did is, is if you're you're standing in the parking lot looking north, the opposite direction from that facility, um, it's that big field, then might might see-
So it's a right way going through there, there's an adult?
There's no, yeah, you don't see, it's just a big lawn that goes out there, and there's a group of Lombardi poplars, and some trees up near Maplewood. And he's got a fifty foot right of way, that was the original legal access into that that property. Uh, but he also, he has a fee access, that's a twenty foot, um, right of way, where the driveway that you went up is currently located, and there's no way you could get an eighteen or a twenty foot road in a twenty foot, twenty foot wide access.
Right.
Because he's got drainage problems, and you know it's going-
Well, yeah, and and it was, I I thought when I was coming out of there to leave, I thought, gee, at the last minute, I thought, I better slow down.
Yeah.
Because you can't see anything-
No.
Yeah.
Uh, on the other side of that bend.
He is, he he talked about trying to get in touch with the person that at the end of the driveway, when you're facing Limerick Road on the right hand side-
On the right hand side, yeah.
That land belongs to somebody else, and he he wanted to see if he could get, um, some a bigger right of way from them, but he has not been able to get in touch with them. He can't get one from the property on the left hand side, the lot that is for sale, because if he does that, they're going to lose their frontage, and they they won't have enough frontage on Limerick Road to be able to build a house. Evidently, they must have two hundred feet of frontage, and that's it.
It must have come into his new road.
Well, he would he would rather not have to put in the road, because the road's between five hundred and fifty and six hundred feet, it's two hundred and seventy-three feet on the driveway, he'd rather be able to widen it out, but he hasn't been able to get anything accomplished.
And that's pretty much what what scuttled him the last time, when he was looking at putting an age restricted community in there, was that he didn't want to deal with that road, because there was a cost involved, but this is the only way he can do it. And the issue here, as my notes have said said to you previously, I guess I got to take this down sometime here, um, what had happened was that, uh, he's got the kennel, he's got his house, and he also has a mother-in-law apartment attached into the house. And his issue is that mother-in-law apartment is allowed, um, and is not considered a unit as long as it's within a single family home. But as soon as you start dividing that single family home into multiple units, that automatically loses its status as not a not a unit, and it automatically becomes a unit. So, his conversion of the kennel into a into another unit now makes it legally a three unit, and so this is a multifamily project. Um, technically, we could call it a subdivision, but right, it it is a subdivision by state standards. And the issue here really for him is to be able to provide adequate access, out safe and adequate access, and I think the board would agree, as Jens has experienced, the existing road just doesn't cut it.
No.
Especially the, now, he gets a lot of traffic there, I I admit.
I don't know how that worked before, I mean, people coming and going.
I boarded my dogs there before, and it's it's a little hairy coming out sometimes.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, so he it's a, he recognizes that, and so he's looking at at putting in the road on that fifty foot right of way, um, in order to do this. But the the issue is that, from staff's standpoint, I would warn him that he probably does need to get an engineer, because number one, he needs to find out where that road's actually going, because I don't think anybody really knows. Um, that's number one, and number two, if you notice, it's kind of in a hole. I'm not sure where you're going to drain it, how are you going to drain it? If you're going to be, certainly, you can put, you know, you can put your fifty foot, you can put your twenty-four foot road, or your twelve, eighteen foot, I think that's what you would need, eighteen or sixteen foot road in there, but the biggest issue there is, how do you drain it?
Yeah, if it wouldn't have been a dry season, that would have been pretty wet today.
Well, yes, he says it's wet anyway.
It's wet anyway, since it's-
To get back up near the driveway where you are, he says it's wet.
And the is, the issue isn't so much as the fact that it's wet, because of course you can fill and put enough granular material in that, um, the issue is, what are you doing, going to do with the water? How does that drain, how are you, you're going to have increased impervious services results of that, which is going to increase, of course, the amount of runoff that's going to be generated in a twenty-five year storm, this board is responsible for knowing where that water is going to go, and right now, we don't have a clue, because it's not a simple downhill, it's it's a bowl. And so the question is, how are you going to get that water out of there within that fifty foot right of way? And that's where this board may just have to say, well, we may need engineering for this, because this is, this is a multifamily project, this is not just a a private way, this is a multifamily project.
I know that a couple of us mentioned that that he should be checking with an engineer, because he's got to make sure that the road gets built to town standards. You know, you you need an engineer to figure that one out.
And I think the financial scope of the project on the upside merits that.
So that's what we came up with at the at the sidewalk, you know, and that was just discussing the road, and and he's getting it out there.
Yeah, we didn't even consider what's the road, or what's at the end of the road, I think it all comes down to the road, you have to be first to know where it is, which will require a survey, and I think, um, to engineer it for the for the drainage.
Hey, Pearl?
Uh, wait here.
Do you have comments?
Yeah, I, um, so I'm very familiar with the the property, um, I've I've actually mowed that yard for my neighbor, and I think she's trying to log in now, Palat property, and I'm very familiar with the lot that's for sale, um, alongside his existing driveway. So, a couple of comments, I mean, um, common sense of it is, he's doing away with the business, it sounds like, and so he's going to have less traffic, no doubt, and that's number one. Number two, somebody nailed it when they talked about the drainage, because it's a low line area right now, um, and he's going to be investing as much money in, uh, excavation as he is the excavation of the road, I don't know if he realizes that. I don't even know if Penn's a little kid, so when you said engineer, you're talking civil engineer, what what were you talking, just engineer for the entire property, or?
Nope, uh, basically, a civil engineer for the road.
Oh, okay, is he, he he's going to have, I don't even know if he realizes he's going to have a lot more, because right now, if he wants to put that, um, road, I guess you can call it a road or right of way, or?
No, it's a driveway, it would be a driveway, right, you'd be a big old access, it would be a driveway, it would be a driveway you need for a multifamily, so it's a two way driveway.
That whole area, that whole entire area drains over alongside his current driveway, so that will still have, somehow the water's going to have to shed to the current area, you know, and he's going to be putting a lot of drain pipe in, he's going to have to add, change the the way it drains a little bit here alongside, I, I mean, he's in for a big project, I don't even know if he realizes that. Um, because if you have a lot of water backup onto Palat property, because during heavy rains now, they get inches of water on on right on their lawn, they have to kind of wait until they know it, so nothing will change there, and it 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 really would back up towards the driveway. So, it's just food for thought, I don't know, and and, uh, then he, there's a lot of services, I guess, have to be moved, um, and CMT's already been out here for that, um, which is going to be, I'll throw it out now, I know it may not be the time to talk about it, but he's actually disrupting a lot of homes out here, um, families that I'm not sure if it needs to be done, I, it sounds like it does have to, listening to you, it sounds like the right thing to do is put the wide right of way versus his driveway, but the common sense side of it is, it's going to be a lot less traffic, um, if he's doing away with the business. Um, because I I guess he's going to have three homes, is that what we're talking about, a total of homes?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear one who was talking very well, so, there's there's going to be three homes, right?
Yes, sir.
And and right now, he's got two homes and a business?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the the trip generation will definitely go down, the the ordinance requires more than that twelve foot driveway that he currently has.
Yeah.
Yeah, un-understandable, um, it's just that it's going to change a lot, a lot of things out here, um, personally, it's it's going to be eyesore for me, because the lights are going to come right into my home, number one, um, number two, they're going to be putting services right in front of my home versus where they are now, um, so that's my my personal issue, but I guess he's talking about kind of walking in, uh, I don't know if you know the property, I'm not sure the address, that it where Smitty used to be, I don't know if you're familiar with that area, I know folks have been around here a long time, but he's going to be walking in with four sides of pavement, that property, so I don't know how the drainage is going to be on his, on on, and I don't know what his name is, I I think it's, uh, Brian Blay, um, he had some concerns, but we didn't, nobody got notification of what was happening, I don't know if we were supposed to get something through the mail like we normally do, um, we didn't get anything for this, so we were, we didn't know it was moving forward, so that's why we kind of jumped on tonight unexpectedly, but, um, so Palat's had some issues naturally, um, so I I don't know when the right time to talk about that, or is it tonight?
Well, this is just the sidewalk discussion.
Yeah, this is this is just a discussion of the sidewalk and what the planning board wants from him going forward, but there there will be-
I can tell you, there's going to be a lot of drainage issues for sure out there, um, because it is it is a wet area.
Could I, Jeff, sir, could I have your name, please?
It's Jeff Perham, P E R H A M, I own the properties of one twelve Maplewood-
Okay.
And seven, eight, nine Limerick.
So, Tad, I just want to clarify something, the buildings, the homes that he wants to build are actually townhomes, is that right?
They will be mult, uh, they're connected multifamily, yeah, because they're all fully multifamily.
Right, so they're not single family homes, which is, I'm sure, I don't know what the zoning is there right now, but it's in contrast to all the single family homes that are currently around it, is that right?
Yeah, you are allowed a multifamily, you you've got two applications occurring at the same time, we don't have a a formal application, this is a pre-application, that's why the neighbors haven't been notified, but we have two things occurring, that that's the only reason I was there, our, is is because, uh, it's a pre-app.
Okay, makes sense.
And when when we get a real app, that's when we notify, as soon as we get it, we notify all the neighbors.
Um, okay.
But, um-
But I just wanted you to understand that these are not single family homes, which is consistent with what is around there, these are-
It's a multifamily.
He's just putting up a new structure, right?
No, no, he's converting, uh, he's converting the kennel into another unit, and so, since it's three, that makes it a multifamily, three attached homes, that makes it a multifamily, which is permitted as a conditional use in the in the, uh, in the R one district, just have to-
Right.
Have to meet all the conditions of the conditional use for that.
Well, I, yeah, I I understand the rules, um, it's just that the common sense of it is, yeah, we're going to, we're going to have less traffic, and we're going to require, you know, a wider right of way, and I know, I understand, totally understand what the requirements are, but if you think about it, it just doesn't meet the common sense test.
Well, we had, we had talked a lot of times about this, and I had encouraged him to try, for several years now too, to try to talk to the neighbors to get just a couple more feet, just as an easement, as a construction easement.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, I I guess that didn't, that didn't pan out very well.
I don't know, you, so on one side of his, his current driveway, he's got a vacant lot.
Right.
On the other side, he's got a wooded area, so I I don't know how much, you said he had, I heard twelve foot driveway.
He's got about a twelve foot driveway right now, yeah.
It's a twelve foot driveway, but what does he have, twenty something feet?
He's got twenty feet, so what he could do is-
Yeah, he does, he does have twenty feet.
Yes, twenty feet, so he could put an easement in there, he could get it, correct me if I'm wrong, Jens, he could get a drainage easement, to put the drainage along the side, to expand it, uh, maybe even a construction easement that he can construct a little bit onto the neighbor's land and have an easement to maintain it, um, and that would probably work.
And and but in in fairness to the applicant, he is not able to get in touch with whoever owns that land, the person he would have to talk to.
It sounds a little techie, I think, maybe the issue is effort.
Well, I wasn't going to go down that road.
Well.
But, yeah, if if it were me, I'd have been banging on the guy's door.
Yeah.
And Tad, why can't he use Limerick Road?
Uh, it's, it's, it doesn't meet any standard we've got for a a driveway.
I mean, but if he redid that, maybe he could-
If he did-
Wide enough.
Property?
If he could get an easement to use the property next to it, he would be able to, because he'd then have a wide enough area in which to put the requisite sixteen, eighteen foot driveway.
He could put an eighteen foot driveway in there, he'd just have to put the 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 drainage on to the opposite, onto the neighbor's land, he could get an easement, buy an easement from them, just to run drainage down, there's only one stretch there-
Yeah.
That he really needs to get additional space on, and some of it he could build on his land, where makes that curve, that he's on his land when he makes that curve.
And then it wouldn't go off Maplewood.
That's cor- that's correct, it would not come off Maplewood.
Seems a lot easier to me.
It could even do it in a way that thrust the location of most of the easement onto the people on the left as you're going out, provided he swings back in before he gets all the way to the Limerick Road, if he can get another small piece of easement triangular on the people on the right, that would work too.
But, he's choosing, he's choosing to go this way right now, the planning board could tell him maybe that-
Yeah, Mr. Perham, you had a comment?
Well, I I'm thinking, um, my thought is he 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 may, whether he moves to a right of way versus the driveway he's got, both probably going to have to work that property, I don't know if he realizes that, because of this drainage issue. You know, he's still going to have to probably, because now he's, he's going to increase the area of drainage, and it's got to go somewhere, I I I don't think it's going to, he's going to be able to get it, come back to Maplewood, that water, it's got to go alongside his current driveway, so he's going to have some some investment over there, if he, you know, even if he goes to a right of way, so he's going to be working, I I was thinking he's going to be working both the driveway and the right of way, and I'm not sure if he realizes that.
And you threw the-
Again, that just goes back to the whole concept of how's he going to handle the runoff?
And the issue, that that's that's why, in a situation like this, that's why you need an engineer, I I think it's advisable in this situation.
I don't need a motion or something.
No, I I don't, I don't think we need-
I think he needs to know that, at least far as I'm concerned, it has to be engineered, and I think it's going to be-
To the jar.
I I hold on, I'm not, I don't think you can hear me, I I think, um, we, I would like to require a, not like to, I I will be requiring a, uh, an engineered study, survey, and drainage, it has-
Oh, absolutely.
We need all that, I think what's going to happen is he's going to be a little, maybe a little surprised at the cost of it, I think it might be worth him pursuing the other, uh, others from the other, be a lot cheaper, that could be two hundred thousand dollars by the time he's done.
I agree.
That's a hundred feet long, that's crazy.
We we need to have an engineer, um, set up on that, and he needs to address the water flow issue, because that's, it's going to be, it's going to be messy.
It will be, and we don't want that backing up to another, to the other owners.
But but for for our purposes tonight, I don't think we need a motion or anything, we just need to let the town planner know that he needs to, he he's going to write him a letter and and say to him, this is what showed up based on the sidewalk, this is what the planning board is going to be looking for.
Yeah, if if it was a big high and dry, it would be different, but.
So let's just have Tad do that, since he's not here, and address the issues, and let him get the appropriate professional help he needs, and, uh, we can revisit this.
Works for me.
Yeah, sort of like moving right along.
Okay, on on to bigger and better things.
Thank you for letting me join in.
Oh, you're quite welcome, thank you for joining. The next item, uh, the wellness center, plenary site, review, determination of completeness, really?
Well-
I thought we were still in a pre-app, but what do I know? A proposal will-
It's been an hour, but, well, they they did submit a-
They did submit a complete app?
Well, no, they submitted pretty much.
Pretty, okay, so we're in the pre-app stage then?
Right.
Because if it's not, if it's not complete, then it's-
Well, I think that we can discuss that more.
Well, we can, yes, definitely, but but if it's it, if it's not a complete application, then we don't want to determine it complete.
Well, let's just take it one step at a time, I think they did submit what they thought was an application that contained all relevant information, but I think that tonight, we have a time, we should go through what was submitted, and what's left to make a complete application, so the applicant can know exactly what you guys need.
Right, and and but what I'm saying is that we don't want to determine it complete tonight if we don't have everything that we need.
Well, I, well, I think we can talk about it more, maybe, maybe we have all relevant information.
The town planner just that- No, the town, the town planner gets to make that decision, we turned it over to him and said- No, the town, the town planner gets to make that decision, we turned it over to him and said, if it's a complete application, he can make that determination, if they wanna come and talk to us about it, that's okay.
Well, I think we should discuss it. Or here, we should talk about the, the contents of the application that was submitted.
This, this is a proposal to expand an existing parking lot serving two commercial structures by approximately fifty-one hundred square feet. One thousand nine and one thousand five Portland Road on a four point one eight acre parcel tax map, forty-three lots, fifty-two and fifty-two A. And the DB one in the RP districts, Elizabeth Boucher is the owner and applicant. Okay.
Yeah, I've got a pre-app form, that's what I have in front of me.
Okay. Well, if you focus on the parking issue.
Yeah, let's, let's discuss that, that whole issue.
All right, can I ask a question that, um, is, you have twenty-four proposed parking spots, plus handicap. How'd you come up with twenty-four, I don't see a formula, what's that based on, do you need twenty-four?
Yeah, that's what we could fit in that space.
So, um, did you, Tad?
Cause we're, we're adding another commercial space to it, so.
You'll need some.
We're gonna need the extra parking to service that front, cause the building that we just redid is zoned business.
Yeah.
But it can be owner occupied.
Yeah.
With an accessory apartment, which is what it is, but the front section is.
All right, so, um, you, are you basing it on the formula of square footage and usage, or is it just, you, you hope to have as many spots?
We're, we're kinda maxing out the space that we're, that we could, uh, pay.
In, in a way, if, if that.
Making the best use of it, is really.
Cause you have a spot number eighteen, that's, that's really, to me, seems like the only tricky one.
Yeah.
And if you didn't need it, I think.
Yeah, and last week we kind of determined that, that was a, that was a throwaway.
Yeah. If that's gonna be getting in your way, could you just?
And it's not gonna affect anything?
Yeah.
You know, it's just, when it was drawn, that's what he thought we could put in there.
All right, good.
All right, so Tom, what you would like to see is an inventory of, of the uses and the parking, and the number of parking spaces you're required to reach one of those uses. We have medical care facilities, which is one space for every three beds for every two employees on the maximum shift. We have offices, medical and dental, which I think this really applies more to that, shifts. Cause medical care facility sounds like that's for, uh, a, a care, in-house care facility. So I think that's what we used before. Which was four spaces for each doctor, dentist, or other medical practitioner, and that's what we, that's what we balance before.
Is that a minimum of four, is that what it says?
That's a minimum of four.
Can have more.
Four spaces, yeah, you can have four. Four spaces per practitioner, and that's, it doesn't even deal with.
So forgive my ignorance, but what exactly does the Wellness Center do?
So, um, I am a chiropractor, I'm a chiropractor, we have a chiropractic office there. We have a yoga, um, a place that does small yoga classes there, one, and then we have a couple massage therapists in there. Um, we have a Boeing.
Intuitive medicine.
Yep, a Boeing room, where we have a Boeing practitioner, which is another form of alternative care.
Okay.
Does, does each, each one of those practitioners have their own separate space, or do they share?
No, we're, we, uh, the chiropractic piece is the full-time piece, and all the other practitioners are part-time. So, for instance, like yoga, he'll have classes two mornings a week for an hour, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and one six AM on Wednesday. And so, you know, that's when he's there. Um, so people rotate in, but there's never, everybody's there full-time all the time.
On the, on the average day, how many people are there? At, at the maximum at any one point?
I would say, as far as practitioners go, I would say on a maximum day, you probably have four practitioners in the building.
So you need sixteen parking spaces.
Sixteen parking spaces.
For that space.
And that's, that's for the, the Wellness Center in the back, you're, you've also got people up front, correct?
No, so, you mean the building?
Well, yeah, that's right, cause nobody's in the building right now.
We occupy the building up front, so we're one place, we're with the pre-car garage, the great building.
That's the residency.
That is our residence currently.
Right, up, upstairs, but the, on the first floor, there's nobody in there?
No.
No.
But above that first floor, so on the first floor in the front of the house, that was the old playhouse, the front of the house, that's empty right now, that is a commercial space. Then above that is a, a, an apartment, and that is occupied with one individual. And she's the one that parks on the riverside, I don't know if you guys wanna read that slide tonight, but.
And, and the commercial space up front is going to be for one practitioner?
I don't, I haven't even, I have not even marketed that place.
Okay.
Because I'm waiting to see what I'm doing here, as far as what we're, what we're gonna be doing here before I'm gonna, people have asked, I'm like, I'm not even showing it until I know what's going on here.
I was looking at it, it looks like a pretty good space.
It's eight hundred and ten feet.
Okay.
So it's eight hundred and fifty square feet?
Eight hundred and ten.
Eight hundred and ten square feet?
And then there's a handicap bathroom in there as well.
Well, I was, I was just asking because based on the fact that you have four practitioners in the back, you could have one practitioner up front with your parking spaces, but if you had two, you wouldn't have enough parking spaces.
Currently.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
And that's, you know, that.
But there's also staff too, like east of park, you know?
And another thing that with, whatever's gonna move up front, probably would require a, or maybe be, be best to have a handicap spot towards the front.
We have two handicap spots currently.
Yeah.
And then we have one handicap spot on the up, on the, um, riverside.
Oh, okay, I, I, I didn't see that.
And there will be a ramp to the handicap parking spot on the riverside. But you didn't see that, cause it's not there.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's all dirt.
I see now, and, on site I didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, Tom.
But there is, but there was.
This, Tom, was explaining to me where it's going to be, when you're, when you're on the side, there's a door with some steps to go up to it, and it's gonna come off the side there and go back down, almost to the barn, almost to the barn door, and then curve out. Cause you, you were saying it's like three eighths of an inch to a foot for the grade.
I believe that's the ADA requirement.
Yeah, it's eight percent.
It's, it's, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a long ramp.
Eight percent, thirty, thirty foot runs with.
But it's.
So on site, on site, Tom, you have an outswing door, you know, to service the handicap, and then it's a short distance into the front, front there.
I didn't see that, and I saw at the opposite corner of the parking area, so, so that, that answered my concern.
But I, we'll also just add that if, if you guys have a concern about handicap spots, I think the applicant is open to evaluating exactly which
Oh, yeah.
spot to designate as handicapped, that can, that's, you know, open to being clarified and improved if, if that's a concern.
It's, it's actually, yeah, you, you need to have, we need one per twenty-five spaces or one per building facility.
As a minimum, and we could have more.
Yeah, we could have more if you want, the problem is to choose up our parking space, cause it's not a standard parking space.
And that's, well, that was one of the things that we were looking at out there, because they're two separate buildings, you need to have two separate park, uh, handicap parking spaces in there. Cause you can't, you can't take the handicap parking space for the, the building in the front and stick it down by the back door on, like, up against the, the Wellness Center itself, it has to be.
It has to be within seventy-five feet of the front door.
Yeah.
Can we point on the plan that you guys have, where, where you're thinking?
Right now, there's three of them. So.
So we know, I.
Well, the reason, the reason we're gonna put it on the riverside is because number one, there was already a ramp there before we, you know, we did the house, but also we thought it'd be difficult to put a ramp on the front of the house near the Route one.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it's gonna be.
There's two, and there's, there's three entrances to the commercial area. So one is Route, base is Route one, and then there's a side door on the riverside. And that was where the ramp used to be, and then there's also a side door on the parking lot side that you parked at tonight, that all of you.
Where the double decker?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So when you walk in that door, there's a common hallway, there's the handicap bath, and then the commercial spaces in front of that.
Oh, okay.
So, Tad, I have a quick question, um, if you consider these as two separate parking areas, each requiring, uh, a handicap space, is there a minimum, uh, so if you only have one doctor and you have four spaces that's required, do you still need a handicap parking space, or just one office?
No, it's for the, it would be for the facility.
So the whole facility would be considered as one whole?
Right.
Both buildings?
Right.
And they would need two handicap spaces?
That could be. But the biggest problem that you have is that the ADA requires you to be seventy-five, each handicap space is gonna be seventy-five feet from the front entrance, and that's where you get into the problem with, with where you are, because.
Because there are two buildings?
Yeah, and well, the distances between the two front entrances is.
Will be seventy-five feet.
Seven one, seventy-five.
Really, is it, as you look at this photograph here, the, the, the red car and the one to the left of that, if you're orienting things this north up?
Do you look at the photo?
Is that not seventy-five feet from both buildings, from front door to both buildings?
It could be, but you better also think of pathway. When you do it, you have to think of the pathway that you go. I mean, I'm not gonna really regulate that, but I think these folks would be.
You talking about, you don't, you, you can't measure across the parking lot?
No, no, you shouldn't do that, no, you gotta, it's gotta be seventy-five feet travel area. That's why you always see them, let's say, uh, go to Home Depot, see them right up front, right in front of the front entrance with the seventy-five. Actually, the one in Bedford actually doesn't need it.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
One was on the riverside, Tad, where the plant, where the, uh, the ramp is gonna be, and the other one is by the Wellness Center?
Yeah.
Would that be sufficient?
Yeah.
There's two, there's, there's two in front of the Wellness Center.
There's two in front, currently, there's two in front of the Wellness Center.
They are proposing three of them right now, so.
So they want them to meet it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause they have more than, they don't have, I mean, that would, you would need three for a seventy-five foot, uh, seventy-five, uh, car parking lot.
Well, so it's set up that way, and, 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 and it runs itself to that, or are we spending so much time talking about?
I don't know.
Well, I, I, I don't know. Cause I only saw the two in, in that corner, seven, at least seventy-five feet from the existing building. So, but I didn't see that hidden one.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted them to add one more, uh, handicap space. And I thought if you have one by the Wellness Center, or two, and one by the river, you, they have plenty.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they do.
I think they, I think they have that.
They may have it fine.
Yeah.
They may have an excess. Because the problem is when you, when you have a handicap space and you count that as part of your parking, you're actually limiting the amount of parking you've got, because unless you folks cater to those in the, who are, who are disability, have a disability or are impaired in some way, you're reducing the number of parking spaces you have for your regular customer.
So it's on, so I have the one on each, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Really?
You can get away with two.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's all we require.
And if you can find one that's seventy-five feet, we use seventy-five feet to the entrance, in a, in a safe pattern, you can do one.
Well, I wonder if the, the two spots that we're adding in the, the front near Route one, maybe we can make that just one handicap.
You could.
And put the ramp on the front of the building, but I just thought, with the ramp being back where it was, would be, you know, off of Route one more, that would be a better spot.
But we can certainly put it in front if that's better.
It's, it's what's best for your, your operation, really, it's, it's, it's something we put in our ordinance, and I will always say, put it in, but I do it for the benefit of business owners, because, um, it's not our job to enforce ADA.
Okay.
But I guess it's my job to make sure that my business, um, people don't get into trouble if we can alert them to the fact they need this.
Did you guys have any other questions from the site, site walk?
The only, the only observation I had on the site walk was that you were really close to, to the river. It's, uh, the.
Which side of the, the parking lot under application, or the other side of the building?
The other side of the building, where, where you plan on putting in the handicap space, that's not that far from the river.
Looks on a map, but it's not.
But that's what was there.
And, and, and that's, that's my point, that was there, but you have to be really careful, you can't build, you can't pave over
Oh, okay.
Off to that side, that you can, that edge where the, where the pavement is, that's, that's the extent of where you can go over.
No, no, we're just recovering it.
Yeah.
Landscape is recovering.
Well, there used to be a garage door, and so the pavement went right up to the barn. And it was dug up, you know, when they did the excavation for the foundation. So we were just gonna repave that, and it was.
And, and I think that that would be fine, and like I said, my whole concern, and I pointed it out there, if you go off toward the river, from the looks of it, 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 and it looks a lot worse on, on the ground looking at it than it does on an aerial photo. You know, if you went a foot over, you'd be encroaching into the wetlands even more than you already are. And right now, it's allowed because it's an existing site, we're not gonna make you fix that problem. We just can't let you go any closer to the river.
So on that issue that you just mentioned with the side that's close to the river, we're kinda looking at, um, I just wanna point us to the right. We're looking at eight point eight, point five, which talks about roads and driveways that are close to a water body, and I think that's an important one for us all to review. If, if, we're concerned about the closeness, and, um, if you read under eight, eight, five, do you guys wanna read it, or would you prefer that I read it? What I think the gist is, it, it, it says that the setbacks are seventy-five feet from the Kenny Monk River, but at the end of it, it says, roads and driveways providing access to permitted structures within the setback area shall comply fully with the requirements of this section, except for that portion of the road or driveway necessary for the direct access to the structure, so, even if we didn't meet the seventy-five, if we consider that side driveway, you know, it's, it's a direct access to the, to the structure, but, but we're not changing it at all, so.
And, but that's the point I'm making, you don't need to change it.
Right.
You've got that spot the way it is now, I see no reason to further encroach upon that, upon the river.
Yeah, they're following up the line.
Right.
And, and, and leave it alone, don't go the other way.
Yeah.
But I don't think you're even proposing paving that at this time.
No, I mean, we're just resurfacing that.
Yeah, yeah. Resurfacing, yeah, I should say.
Yes, that's all.
What is resurfacing then?
Just blacktop on top of it.
Okay, so it's, it's pavement.
Oh.
Or re-paving existing pavement.
I don't know the terminology, we're just making the pavement look like pavement. We're trying to clean up the building.
And you've done a good job.
Well, not yet, it looks terrible on the outside.
So, will the public be using that, that side over there?
Well, if, if we eventually, you know, end up putting a handicap spot there, that's the only public that would be using that.
It, it, it does raise the question of how are you going to get out of there? You don't have any space to turn around.
No, you don't.
You don't wanna back on the Route one. At least I hope you don't wanna back on the Route one.
You have to put the handicap on that side, or put the handicap on the other side.
You know what, I, I was gonna say this earlier, the thing I'm saying now, is, if, if I, if I pulled in there and needed a handicap spot, I would pull to your main parking area, and wonder, where is the spot? And then find out, oh, do I have to pull back out on Route one?
That's true.
Which can be dangerous.
Yeah, yeah, and then turn it into that.
Well, let's put it up, let's put it up where those two.
Yeah, and I not have to.
You can still, you can still count those.
Yes, falls one and two on this one.
Yeah, you can still count the, the driveway in the back as, as spots.
Right.
But, and that could be used for the tenant or, or someone else, maybe not a customer.
Right.
So you still have some spots to use there.
Yeah.
Cause the woman that parks there now, she does have no problem turning around to pull out.
If they had two or three cars back there though, it might.
Yeah, who comes?
No, we can't, we can't, we can't, I mean.
To the chair.
You can't have two or three cars packed out.
Yeah, Mark, you just have to back out. You can't back out. Hang on, I'll just. Okay, take.
Question overall, how many spots do they need, or the residential plus the building that we're speaking of, which is not rented yet, figuring max there, plus what at the Wellness Center, how many do they need altogether?
Well, the, the residential is already, it would be right in front of the garage doors, in fact, she parks in the garage.
So there is.
My, she being, my two bays are full.
Your, your two bays are full.
Yeah.
All right, we need two, we need two parking spaces per residential unit.
Yeah, but the garage, uh, spots.
The garage counts.
There's three by garage.
But if they, if they have, or finds.
So we need one for, for that, for, because you have another re, you have another residence.
Well, you said how many per bed or something?
No, the, uh.
Red, he said two.
Per, two per residential unit.
Okay.
Okay. So you've got four, you've got two in there and yours in, in another apartment, right? So that's, there's four. They've got two, well, you, even, don't tell us you fill up the base, okay? So they've got two inside, they need two outside, right?
Correct.
Okay. So there's, let's say, so we got two outside and then if they've got four practitioners at any time, there's sixteen, eighteen. Then.
And there's, and there's going to be that, I, I hate, I know that you don't have anybody in there, but you wanna address the issue of parking for that unit, which is another, of course, you're looking at twenty-two spaces.
That's why it's not rented, because we need the parking.
Twenty-two spaces.
I, I'd count twenty-one, cause you do have three bay garage. And, and I heard you had, say, two inside, two outside.
Yep.
Is that the formula or could you just say three inside, whether you do or not?
Right.
And one outside, you need one outside plus twenty.
How many spaces are on the, uh, on the south side?
Two.
Two in that whole driveway area? In this area, over here, Tom?
Yeah, I think there's two. You can get two.
There is two.
It's wide enough for two cars.
So you, you either need twenty-one, twenty-two, you're, you're looking at, uh, twenty-four plus a handicap. You can go with twenty-four. If you want more spot, spaces, you can always have more, but that, number eighteen is, is.
So get rid of that. So that means it'll be twenty-three.
And, and if that was the case, then I think you.
Which one's eighteen, Tom?
The one at the bottom.
The one closest?
Here?
Southeast corner.
Right by the garage.
Yeah.
The corner by the garage.
And that's the one that's within the hundred-foot setback.
Everything else is outside the, the setback.
Yeah, it is.
Except for the wooden sidewalk, but that's already there.
It's existing.
Right, it's existing, yeah.
Right, but number eighteen is now existing.
So get rid of eighteen, wash that. Okay.
And you have enough, you still have enough spaces.
Okay.
And then, Ron, instead of adding two.
You just should add one handicap.
That's right.
You, say that again, Tom? And then, so up at the top, where we're gonna add two spaces near Route One, there's two there now, we're gonna add two more. We'll just make that one handicap for the one zero zero five.
That's pretty good, yeah.
And if we needed to, we could actually eliminate one of the two that were for the wellness center. We could need one, right?
Yeah, you only need one, you can grab one there.
Yeah, but I think we'll leave it as it is, you know?
Yeah.
It's, it's, if you don't. If you're clientele.
Might be nice to have it if you have room.
Well, let's look at, let's, you know, we're doing design, this is great. If we're, if we're looking also at, um, what you can do with that office there, I mean, um, what, what's your potential? You know, our, our, in, in table five twelve four two, which is based by a required parking space. You know, it, it has lists of different activities and the parking spaces required for the activities. If you're looking for office, you know, the office is one space per two thousand, two hundred, excuse me, two hundred square feet gross area. So you have a, you're talking to a lawyer. Well, you have eight hundred, so that's one per two, two hundred, so that's four parking spaces for a lawyer. Uh, if you were to do it based on, I just noticed something on residential, residential, how big, you have, that, that apartment you guys, one bedroom, right?
No, 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 that's two.
That's two?
Yeah, that's two bedrooms.
All right, never mind that. Then let's see, uh, you've got the other one, retail sales force spaces for two, one thousand, those. That's, that's, I, it's actually less. Retail sales is actually less than office.
Yeah, because they're, they're gonna turn over.
Yeah, they are, so you're right.
Well, and, and we're gonna be pretty selective about who goes in there because there's a resident up above.
And we're in there right now.
Yeah, so we just, somebody that's not gonna make a lot of noise, but I don't think retail would be good.
Well, you could, you could put a good account, uh, an accountant's in there. And the only time they're gonna be busy, well, no, this year they're gonna be busy all year long, cause they, they're now talking about it in extension to October fifteenth.
Really?
Yeah. Mnuchin came out with it yesterday. Please give me a break.
You're rejecting too much personal interest.
But, but outs, outside of taxis and you, most counties are not having a lot of traffic.
Yeah, no, they don't.
To the chair. Yeah, Marty?
Have them figure out the maximum, even if they don't have it, that way they're covered, no matter who gets in there.
Right, yeah.
Well, I, I'm thinking that's our.
That's what a journey design is.
That's what it is right, yeah, that's what we're trying to.
Right, good. I think all would do it, it, you could call it a, uh, medical, dental, or business, or service. And they're all come out to four, based on, uh, you said, eight, eight hundred and ten square feet, which is.
So you need four, four spots, you need two hundred feet per.
So. Chad, will, will they have to, um, designate what that use would be?
Well, I don't wanna police him for, for the rest of his lives.
No.
No.
But I think as long as it, the parking space.
Needs the minimum, that's why I'm saying, going with something simple like office.
Why, why wouldn't it just be any permissible use within, for that zone, period?
Yeah, yeah. Well, unless it's a restaurant with, with five tables, then I got my parking space, yeah, I know.
We live there.
Please.
I know. You would, Beth, you would not believe some of the weird things.
I understand.
I would not believe it.
That's in the R one, isn't it?
No, this is DB one.
Oh, come on, work with me here. It's in the R one, they can't put a restaurant there.
It's DB one, yes, put a restaurant in, they put a food truck in. They don't need anything.
Run Route One, right, they, welcome to Orlando.
They go, they go.
We have one on the other side in Motorland.
Yeah.
Down the other end, yeah.
But, no, I think, I think looking at four, four spots, you know, you're covered for whatever you put in there. If you put in one practitioner, they need four spots. You put in, uh.
An office.
An office, you need four spots, two hundred, two hundred square feet per.
We'll just call it four.
Should just say four. And that gives you, uh, what you need.
Okay. The other issues that we, you know, talking about the issues, we, we all went out and saw it. We know which way it's gonna pitch for drainage, and which way it's gonna discharge the drainage, discharging in the flood line. I think we just need a detail on that, that sheet, on that, uh, how that level spreader will be worked. Your engineer didn't, isn't giving us details on how that's gonna work, okay? Because, um, it's gonna be done correctly or else you're gonna have an erosion problem.
Well, it, it's been working, you know, it's just existing.
Yeah, but you're gonna, you're gonna have more parking there. And you have a, a grating, he's, he right now kinda goes in different directions, but you're kinda, he's concentrating it all to this one spot. So you're gonna have a larger parking area and it's kinda, and he's gonna grade this, that's, that would be the other thing, we need some grading on which way this is gonna go. He says it's all going towards this one spot, towards eighteen, basically, towards.
Towards eighteen and then out into the field?
Then out, out in the field. Who's saying that? That's the, what the?
That's what the engineer said.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Although I, you know, from what I could see, it was looking like it was in the twenty, parking lot twenty, so that's why we, we need, I think there's more of a gradient there at eighteen. We need a detail on, on how you're gonna handle that, that drainage.
Well, what, what would you be looking for?
Well, first of all, we, we need to just have some spot elevations. I think, we don't need full grading on this, we just need some spot elevations of what, what you're gonna grade up at, let's say, twelve, and what, what down towards eighteen is gonna be, what the gradient's gonna be there. Cause it, it is pretty, pretty much gonna be what you have existing.
Yeah.
I would assume. I don't, I don't think it's gonna do a lot more grading. But also a detail on the level spreader, how that water's gonna come into the level spreader and how it's gonna be disturbed, uh, distributed. What a level spreader is, basically, is a way of distributing the water so you don't get galling down there. Cause we get a twenty-five year storm, which is four inches of rain in a twelve hour period, that means, excuse me, twenty-four hour period. It's, that will, can produce a lot of, of, of erosion of the, depending on what the time of concentration is, how quickly it comes down, in other words. So, uh, I would say that, uh, we would need a detail on that level spreader for that twenty-five year storm.
Level spreader?
Yeah, well, that's what he says.
Okay.
We need a detail on how this is gonna work and how he's gonna make it, cause that, this little thing down here that he says?
Yeah.
I don't have a detail on this.
Okay.
You know, and how big of a level spreader, I mean, he's got, he's got the detail on the parking lot, but I need a detail on that level spreader because that water's gonna be going into your, onto your proper.
And you wanna see it going more towards a commercial building, right?
No, I, I, well, I, I, I just wanna make sure it works.
Okay.
Okay, I, a level spreader requires, it has to be engineered properly. It's gotta be level, it's gotta come, and it's gonna have enough capacity so the water fills up. What it is, is really a ditch that's actually level with a lip on it.
Okay.
And it's, it's sort of, it's like, it's a difference between pouring the water out of a plate. You have that water with plate and your water, and you pour it out versus pouring it out of a jug. You have a point source in a jug, you know it comes out much faster and, and more powerful than it does in a plate which just sheets off. So it's really important, it's designed to sheet off properly, otherwise it can fail, and then you got a problem. Because if it starts galling and it starts, um, rilling on you, it'll eat back into your parking lot. So you wanna make sure that it's done right, and we wanna make sure it's done right too. Discharger is fine on, the problem with where it's going, because we know you're not gonna build back down there. Well, you could, but I wouldn't if I were you.
So, uh, those, those spaces that we're adding in between the two buildings?
Yeah.
In the, you know, towards the field. So if we had a level spreader right on the other side of those?
Well, that's why, that's why, well, he needs, that's why.
No, I would give you the detail, but he's gonna ask me what you're looking for, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look, I, what I want is a detail on how this spreader's gonna work and where's, where the runoff's gonna go.
Is it possible that the engineer could determine that the existing drainage seems to be working? And that would be his opinion that nothing further is needed, the existing drainage.
Well, he's already spec something different than the existing drainage.
Okay.
That's what I'm responding, I'm responding to the fact that he's already, he's already proposed something, but I don't have any details on it.
Okay.
So if he's gonna propose that, I need some details to.
You need detail on what he was proposing.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is probably your standard thing to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is his language.
Yes. You know, he did the bridge.
Oh.
Worked for the state.
So he knows, he knows, well, he said it, so he knows what he wants, he just hasn't spe, inspected it yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think we're gonna need, we have an expansion of a parking lot, so we're gonna need some landscaping on the front.
And that was mentioned someplace, I saw it.
Yeah.
There's, uh, there's something about the landscaping for, uh, not, not only on Route One, but off to the, to the south. They talked about.
To the north.
Was it to the north? I thought it said to the south for the, for residents, and I couldn't find any residents to the south.
No, there's no residents there, no.
Well, I know, that, I thought it was strange.
No, it's to the north. If it's south, then I'm, I'm.
So you're saying along Route One, that would be to the.
Well, yeah, some, we need some, we need to adjust a, a screening along Route One and, um.
What about the screen that's currently there?
Yeah, there's.
And what if we're not touching, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Oh, no, no, I understand.
Cause we're not, I mean, why, like, if that's what's there and that's what we had, why?
Yeah, you already have some shrubs.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We were just trimming them because they got, they were covering the sign to the.
Right.
You can see it on this picture, um, and I'll pass this around really quick. You look on the road, it's pretty massive bushes. I mean, I had to trim them. And I used to install satellite dishes without a ladder, so.
Yeah, it.
And that's supposed to make us trust his judgment.
They're huge.
No, I, 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 I saw them, they're used. It looks like they're used, aren't they?
A question for you, Chad.
Yes.
On the le, on the level spreader, that's on the stormwater runoff plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just on drainage.
Right, I just wanted to make sure, cause it referenced here in the notes, uh, that we needed to see that, and I wasn't sure if it was, if that's what was showing up or if there was something else.
His design for that level spreader is based on how much runoff's gonna be generated by this. So he's gonna do a quick calculation, probably using the rational that I did. Unless he's gonna use HydroCAD and, you know, overkill. Basically, he's looking at the area that's being, that's gonna have imperious surface of drainage here. He's gonna determine the path, you know, how, what the distance is, what the coefficient is for, um, the friction coefficient, which is point nine five, cause it's imperious, you're paving this whole thing, right? So, uh, he'll just do a formula, see what, how much runoff is generated in a twenty-five year storm down there. And he'll size that level spreader based on that. So he's gonna do a small drainage, stormwater drainage plan. Cause he has to determine whether or not the level spreader's gonna work or blow out. Okay?
Yeah, that protects you too.
Well, yeah, you don't want, you, you know, go back and.
We don't want our septic field going down.
Well, that's the thing, a septic field's right down below, and that's the only thing I'd be a little concerned about. You'd have to have a lot of water going down there, but if you, you did have an unusual storm.
Yeah.
It could, it could eat away at the sign, and that doesn't look like a cheap septic system to me.
No, that was put in for the daycare.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
That'll serve twenty-one children and three adults. That is three meals a day.
That's a big, that's a very big system. It's all raised, it has to be, because it's gotta be above flood, flood elevation. So that's why it's so raised. I think the soils are fine here. I would imagine they travel these soils into there.
So as far as the screening, the parking, I think they're, they're covered.
I think so, too.
Shrubs.
Yeah. Well, we also need one street tree. We need one street tree for fifty feet.
Is that if we're just repaving, you know, expanding existing?
Maybe, uh, maybe, uh, maybe on that, like, on that, uh.
On the tongue.
On, on the tongue, sticking into the parking lot, so it's out of.
Yeah, we don't want it underneath the utilities.
Well, I think the sign's in that tongue.
Is it really?
Yeah. Uh, or.
Right here, Tom.
Oh, yeah, that's the tongue.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would.
Where are we putting in that?
If, if there's a requirement for a street tree?
There's a requirement for a street tree. We can put two street trees, we can put two trees, one in one tongue, one in the other.
What's that requirement, just so I know?
Uh, it's gonna be in section five eleven, I believe, which is landscaping.
Any species?
Five nine, let me see.
Any species?
Yeah, I got a whole list of them if you, you can pick, pick from that list.
I'm serious, we do have a list. We have a list, we have a, we have a list of acceptable.
Where are we adding these trees?
Tree, one tree, but I, I think we'd have, I'm just, without reading five nine closely, I'm not sure with the repaving application.
Well, you're expanding a camp in your parking lot, that's why.
But is there a threshold of expansion that triggers that requirement?
Coming to us.
Okay.
Okay.
We just wanna be sure.
We're not trying to get too much from you, trust me.
Okay. Just trying to meet the minimums, so.
So five nine six. Five nine six.
Yeah, Marty?
Watch your trees, cause otherwise you're gonna block your sign and they won't see where it is.
That's why we're gonna probably use a column or a tree.
It's so close to the road now.
Yeah. Probably use a col, column or tree, so it's narrow, doesn't affect your tree, you know, so. I could give those, I could send that to you.
Yeah, we got a, we got a list.
A lot of you know, I'm not understanding this right now, that part.
No, you have to understand our website is damaged. It needs a lot of work, it needs some work, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have an IT person.
Yeah, well, we do, actually, we need a volunteer.
Uh, well, they're suggesting, is a tree, one tree somewhere here, which is, I think your sign's like right here.
It is.
They're talking about a tree here, so.
The sign's right, definitely the sign's right here.
It's in that area?
Right there.
She just can, I mean.
Maybe that aerial photograph.
Can I just look at that? That's the sign at the face of the.
Okay.
You're saying behind it?
Okay, behind it.
Okay, behind it. We're talking about behind it. We're not talking in front of it. We don't wanna intrude the site.
Toward the wellness center.
So those two tongues, that would satisfy the need if each one of those tongues had a tree. That would take care of. That's more than that's.
Well, it's less.
It's more than fifty feet, but that would be okay.
The the south tongue is gonna be a parking space.
Well, I'm yeah, we're looking at at this.
Right here.
Or you can take more parking space. We got four here. Is there another one here?
No, here. Oh, you mean here?
Yeah, that tongue and that tongue. That's what we're talking about. That would take care of that problem.
I don't know if we can put one there, cause of the underground utilities going through there. We might be able to.
Well, take a look.
Sure.
I just did a switch on Cal Repair for Jason, who's got his way and has a loophole about this thing. Because he had he had that problem. He had he had, oh, he blazed maples out there and yeah, he wasn't gonna work. Yeah, underground.
Also, prepare.
Yeah, Marty.
Question also too, since those are two different lots, the the uh the unit up front along the river, they're gonna have to have a sign for uh.
Yep.
There's a sign there.
There is a sign there. That's where Adrian used to have her sign, right?
There's a wellness sign.
Nope.
No.
There's a sign. There's an existing sign in front of the commercial space where it's like how Adrian used to have.
One zero zero five.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's smaller than what she's allowed to have. Just start like you. If you wanted a bigger sign, it's expensive.
Is there anything else? Anything that the planning board uh saw on the sidewalk?
Uh, nothing of concern.
No, not at this point. Susan?
Oh, wow.
You muted yourself.
I muted.
Oh, no, sorry, I'm good.
Marty?
I'm good.
All right.
Okay, anything that that you wanna address that we haven't?
Yeah, I think so. I think because of the initial confusion of whether they had submitted an application or pre-application, I'd like to unpack that a little more here at the time. Because I think it was our understanding that we did submit an application. And so I don't know if you have a copy of that application in front of you.
Yeah, I do. It's it's on a pre-app. It's on a pre-app form.
So is that the, Tom, is that the one you probably just got the form from?
Yeah, I I've actually been treating it like it was a real application.
Actually, you you have to do that. Continue to do that?
Yeah, I I did.
But can we, yeah, if that's how you've been treating it.
That's the way I'm treating it, yeah.
Okay, and that's what we thought.
I consider this, we we don't do, we don't do determination and completion. It's on a pre-apps. So, you know, I there's, the problem is, this, I recognize it as a mistake. That's why it's not listed as a pre-application. It's listed as determination and completion.
Could could we just um?
It's they come in, it comes in a package and it has the pre-app form and then it's got the actual form in there. You filled out the pre-app, but you put it in the checklist.
I thought it was all one.
What waivers are. I I know.
So, yeah, that's.
Uh, the waivers that are being asked for, um, let's see. The approval block, we do need the approval block, guys. That's what we signed.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
We need that. Um, let's see, uh, you landscape plan, we just talked about, so that's gonna be taken care of. Uh, building plans, we don't need. Uh, elevation of signs, we don't need. Cost estimates. Yeah, we need a cost estimate.
Could be reversed to where?
They were in there. They're in there. They're in there.
Oh, I thought they were. I thought they were. You had it checked off, that you don't need it.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know what?
And you need a stormwater plan.
We need a stormwater plan and we need details. That's what we really need. But let's go over any other waivers. Um.
So is the. The uh the thing we discussed earlier, is that the stormwater?
Yeah, that's the stormwater plan. It's a small plant. Look, you're an existing facility. You're adding additional paved surface, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a modified stormwater plan. Your your engineer's actually kind of, I think he's done it in his head. Uh, we just need him to do it. Probably use, as I said, the rational method.
Yeah.
And and if he's a DOT engineer, he knows that.
Yeah.
C R A.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Yeah, I can send you a, do you want me to send you an email or a letter?
Tom, did you take that?
No, I'm just asking for it.
No, I mean, just to summarize all the things that we want.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, that would just wanna make sure, like, for the expedited, that we know exactly what you guys need and we can give it to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we, do we wanna keep going down the waiver list?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to get it done now. I'm sure we've got everything. Um. So we we've got the landscape idea. I will send you those the spec on that. Building plans need, can you wait? We don't need that. Schematic signs, can you wait? Cost estimates, we have. Uh, site features, um, the app goes asking for a waiver on site features and and uh topo.
Since it's already a developed site.
And.
Yes.
And the runoff is gonna be deep detailed.
Yeah, I mean.
That's the that would be the relevant reason for asking for the site detail, wouldn't it?
Yes, it is. And and when I say site detail, we give full topo survey.
But I think you did.
Why are you reverberating already?
We submitted one.
We submitted a topo.
Yeah, it was on the screen. That was issue. It wasn't on the, there's the topo. They got a topo. Yeah, I think your engineer's gonna need this to.
He has it.
Yeah, he's got it. Well, yeah, it's. Winston Hughes.
Oh.
So that's covered.
See, I think I think I would have looked at that and said, yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, no, that is, no, that's.
It was in the other nation.
Alright, so we were, we just were trying to do what we're.
I thought it was. I did, what my issue was, I was I I had to put it on that in the plan up on the window to see through.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Um, otherwise, yeah, I think I'd say that that's been submitted. Uh, the the engineer will probably take spots and make an assumption about spots on here. This is, looks like it's probably from the LiDAR. As it say, it's probably from LiDAR. Which you use all the time, so that works. Uh, let's keep going. Uh, you gave me the map, the the um, all the mailing addresses, and okay, it's okay, the snippers work. You're concerned.
It was during COVID, I couldn't, I was like, shoot, yeah, work with me. So I typed up the envelopes.
It was great.
I was like, I was like, did it work for him?
I don't have to stick them on the envelopes now. Uh, you don't need the, yeah, they I agree, they don't need the Elliott S E evaluation. We have two systems that's already working. Uh, there's no covenants, just stormwater counts, no traffic study is required. I don't, they they um, that's not required. Groundwater studies aren't required. Um. They've got the property boundary, the proposed sidewalk. You gotta show us the change in the parking.
What, you mean the change from the existing parking to the new parking?
Are you gonna change any of the parking you gave us on the plan? You're you're gonna take off that eighteen?
We're taking off eighteen.
That's it.
That's eliminate the eighteen.
So updated.
Yeah, an updated cycle.
With the signature block.
We're gonna move it.
Yeah, because we can't sign it. Without that, we can't sign it, and I'm gonna need a.
Off eighteen and move the handicap.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna need a full-size. These guys can have the small, the eleven by seventeen.
Yep.
But I need I need.
The big one.
Two big ones.
The two big.
And one you're gonna want for yourselves, uh, and one I need, and I also need a PDF of it.
Okay.
Actually, I need two of them. I need a Mylar, yeah. I need a Mylar.
Do you need a Mylar?
I need a Mylar.
I'm sure your needs doesn't require them anymore.
I know, but you see, we're always fashion.
Okay.
Because you see, we we haven't even had a Blu-ray to run it on, but at least it's the only thing that's permanent I've got in this place because your plan will disappear at some point. It'll it'll come out of the file, some appraiser will put in the wrong file and will miss it. And so I always give them a flat phone and say, here is Wellness Center right here, when somebody comes in like a lawyer and says, where's the plan? I don't see a plan. So that's why we have Mylars. I know it's old technology. I know.
They're out there, we can get it.
Um, I if I if I had a scanner, I'd do my own PDFs, but I have to go to Staples now. Perhaps it takes too much of my time.
Got it.
I don't think Staples can do the Mylar.
Yes, they can.
Can they?
Yeah, they've done for me.
Cause I think Susan had mentioned there's coffee, there's a coffee center there with a spur in Bitterfield?
Yeah, copy it.
I didn't mean to joke about the Mylar, sorry.
You definitely do Mylars.
You just you just stop your head in my tracks a little bit.
I know, I should have shut up. I'm sorry.
Are there any other waivers that we're looking at?
I I I think the only waivers we have were a waiver of um. No, there's other waivers.
So what do we have, sir?
Uh, it boils down to um, most of this does not apply. Waiver on the um, the building plans, the signs. Uh, so traffic impact, groundwater study. Uh, we should have the fire chief look at.
Did we ask for a waiver of that?
Yeah, no, you said it didn't apply.
I think that might have been based on our underlying idea that this was repaving an existing parking lot. It wasn't gonna change the traffic flow.
But he he's gonna wanna take a look at it to make sure that it's not gonna encroach. If a truck has to come in there, it needs to be a return, or he's gonna end, somebody's gonna end up.
Bigger, so I think common sense test is that might, it's gonna be better.
He's a. And we're giving you.
I I asked him to go down.
So you so so Fire Chief?
Yeah.
Got it.
So will the the twenty-four feet that you?
Yeah.
Said that we needed, would that be adequate for the truck, you think?
Should be. We just we just ask him, he might ask you to strike that front portion and say, make it a fireway, no parking right in front of the door. But right now you don't have any parking in front of the building, so he might ask you to strike it first.
Okay.
Because what he wants to do is, if he needs to, his concern is being able to get in with his truck, set up, make sure you can ladder your building, ladder your building where you're living, um, and also be able to get crews in in hoses in and out. That's what he's most concerned.
He had three, he had three trucks there two months ago, and he had no problem getting in. Just saying. I'm just saying, cause I was there and I was freaking out. So there were three trucks, and he pulled right in.
We may have a little.
And he taught me how to make everything up to speed, and I did it all.
Up to speed?
Yeah, like, you know, like the fire, the fire alarm, control panel, make sure you label the door, fire alarm, control panel.
So he's very familiar with this already. I would imagine he did, because you had to have a fire separation between the the uh, the commercial space and the living space, right?
Yeah, so.
So he had to come for the fire marshal, probably had to get.
I don't know.
No, you wouldn't know it was a fire marshal.
I would just applaud him for having got enough.
I will ask the, I will ask the patrol letter, cause that's standard for us.
Okay.
Okay. I went up to see the fire marshal when we did the commercial building years ago.
That was fun, wasn't it?
That was fun.
Yeah, yeah.
So we know, so you got the letter, you're gonna ask him before we don't?
Yeah.
So as far as the uh, whether the, this is a prelim or it doesn't really matter, I think next time we can, you you know what? We can't consider it's complete yet.
No, I'm.
Next time you come in, if you have all these things, we can deem it complete, and then we can move right into whatever.
Public, public hearing, I think.
That same time.
Public hearing would have to then be scheduled.
Would you choose to advertise the public hearing?
For for the next time.
Can I just?
But but I will, let me finish it. There's.
Please.
It chances out, there will still be some minor details or revisions that we we you might need to clean up on. Usually it'll take that extra two weeks, uh, unless you ace everything, which.
So is that, just to clarify, between the next meeting when we do the things that we have lists now, we can clean those things up in between that meeting and the public hearing?
Public hearing, great, correct, got it. And at the public hearing, and I'm only saying it because I think you're you're so close to having this all, you know, set. At at that public hearing, then we can um move on to consider approval.
Right.
Let's get to the public.
We usually do the approval, if we're going to do the approval. We usually do it the same day that we have the public hearing.
Okay.
So unless there, unless there's something in the application, cause again, we can say that the application is complete, and there may be something in there that causes it to fail, cause we didn't get. We need a stormwater runoff plan, and it says, no, if you do this, it's gonna flood the river. So, ah, yeah, we probably don't wanna give you that permit. But it's complete, because we had the application.
All things considered, best case scenario, this would be, could be done by the end of July.
By the end of July, probably the twenty-third, I would say.
Four weeks from now.
Cause with, cause the the the, if we deem it complete on the ninth, which is the next meeting, two weeks later on the twenty-third, we would be able to, we could post the public hearing and and proceed at that point.
You guys give me.
Cautiously, cautiously optimistic.
Yeah.
You guys are giving me no time to do that work.
Putting them against the wall too.
Well, that's up to them. I mean, if they don't, if they don't.
Down the road, it's long.
We we can take more time if.
There it is.
Yeah, if if you don't, if you don't have it ready, then we'll just have to continue on. It 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 does create a timeframe issue. It it does create a timeframe issue, because our standard of acceptance is fourteen days prior to the meeting in order to get on the agenda.
Means you gotta have it today.
Yeah, pretty much.
Well, give me something next week.
Okay, that's the biggest.
I I would say uh that we would wanna do it the same way we did with the last applicant, and say by Monday.
They can't do that.
Well, let me just make sure we know what we're doing.
That's what we told the other applicant to do.
Yeah, but.
Can I confirm what we know, what we need to do for Monday?
Sure.
So when we were going through that list, the things that I wrote were approval block, stormwater plan, updated plan showing the couple changes, and the fire chief letter, which we're gonna get.
And landscape.
Landscape, and then when you say landscape, you mean?
Trees.
Showing those two potential trees, okay.
And whatever changes, you're gonna do the parking lot, cause you're talking about moving on a few spaces.
That would be on, well, we take eighteen out. We'll have that updated.
Right. And well, you're also thinking about getting rid of one of the one of the handicap spaces.
Yeah, we're gonna move that.
I think we should, like he said, by having a.
Update that.
Well, that's, you know, update, that's mostly an updated plan.
I just need one clarification. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Though I I'm not trying to make this a big deal. I just wanna make sure we're giving you what you want. For the landscaping, what do we need? Just to show you, we're about, we're gonna put a tree here?
Yep.
Okay, that's all you need.
Yeah, we're gonna put, we're gonna put a tree here.
Uh, no, this is a tree, this is what we're.
I'll send you the list. I'll send you the list Monday. I don't have it.
Okay, alright, yep.
And you need by Monday, the, what's the date, Monday, in order to.
This coming Monday.
It is the twenty fifth.
You can't do it by this coming Monday.
We can't do it. There's no way that the engineer's gonna be able to have that by Monday.
And the the problem is, you're gonna be doing it on a Fourth of July weekend. If I let you go to the next Monday.
The following Monday's the sixth.
Right.
Yeah.
That's over the Fourth of July weekend.
You're not gonna get anything there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that looks on the first.
You gotta get it done this weekend and into into the first part of the week.
Okay.
Okay? Just for your own benefit, that's what you wanna get to. I'm, and we're, yeah. Let me know how your progress is, because we, cause we're on four tens now.
Mm-hmm.
We're not here on Friday automatically, so that means we're not here Thursday. That's our Fourth of July.
Okay.
Okay, so Wednesday.
So Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, yeah.
Okay.
We're not here. So I'll get you something Monday. I'll get you the, the, cause I'm I'm, I don't go in tomorrow. So I I will get you the stuff on Monday. I'll send you the landscape stuff.
Okay.
Okay. The trees. You made a choice. I didn't even make a suggestion. Well, I'll call the engineer tomorrow and try to get this.
I could, I do.
Yeah, he might, the engineer must have it.
This is not hard.
He just needs to give us what that detail was, he's gotta have it, yeah.
He's gotta know, yeah, he should know how much runoff this thing's going through, or he designed it properly.
Just like John Smart did, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, flipped that in a week.
I know it, he did that really well.
Okay. L.A., there, it was a landscape architect who did that.
Think we're all set.
Okay, any other questions, Forrest?
Just thank you guys for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate you clarifying.
Thanks for doing the walk.
Yeah.
See you in two weeks.
I like that a lot.
We don't, we don't like, we don't like spending a lot of time here, we don't wanna get these things done, because you guys work on your business now.
We wanna get it done, we wanna get it done.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I hate having to look at the same thing.
I'm sorry, I don't have your reading.
Oh, please.
Three, four, five, six, it's like, oh, please. And some of them, we have lots of.
Well, plus the paper, you know, they're busy, we have it on there, God, great, I mean, that's the big argument.
I schedule that.
That's the flame, I have it, yeah.
It's like a traffic light in the house.
Sure.
Who do you get the papers?
So I'm gonna do, it was ABC.
Yeah. Face the mom.
Yeah.
I'm always curious as to.
Oh, you're the attorney?
Yeah.
Geez, I thought you were like the son of.
You know, I wear many hats.
Are you the son of one? He acted like a son of one, he was acting like a attorney.
When I pull in my driver's.
Yeah, that's a good read.
Fixing these two ruts over the pavement.
Sneaky, he's being sneaky.
Good, I don't have any money.
Yeah, right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all, and have a great week, thank you.
Okay, the next item that we had to look at. Our discussion, a proposal to establish uniform construction and dimensional standards for commercial driveways. Do we have anything on it?
Yeah, I sent it to you, I haven't finished it. I stole it from Portland.
You mentioned that, too, but this is the latest one that, that I got.
Yeah, I, I added a little bit more to it.
Okay, because I don't see it.
Uh, the, the, the thing about it, basically, gentlemen, is, is establishing a, um, every place I've looked, driveways are all over the place, some of them are scary, um, but usually, they, they basically say that they, a driveway for a multifamily or for a commercial, uh, space should be twenty to twenty-four feet wide, no less than twenty, no more than twenty-four. Twenty, twenty-four is pretty big, that's a, that's a, that's an arterial road. But it's also important, because you know how people drive, uh, I wa, I was looking for eighteen feet, and that wasn't really there. An eighteen-foot road, and I never found anybody that was really into that, um, mainly because of turning, and because of truck traffic that you get, you know, delivery trucks and stuff like that. The thing that really got me was the, 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 uh, the throat of coming into a, a, uh, into a major road. And if you, we look at our commercial driveways, mostly we're getting, coming into Route One, or to Route, well, uh, we have something that'll come in the log cabin, but pretty much that's where they're gonna be, most of them are gonna be coming, we already have standards for those. So, what I'm thinking about a lot more is, just, what do we do for a width? And I'm leaning towards saying, it should be a minimum of twenty feet. Now, right now, we're requiring private ways to be six, sixteen feet, with two-foot shoulders.
Well, we don't require them, no.
Well, it's slightly, so, this is, this is bigger than, uh, private ways, serves ten lots.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't find anybody who goes under twenty.
And I, I don't have a problem with twenty, we already have standards on D V one?
Uh, not really, we really don't have driveway standards.
Okay, then I, I, I misunderstand what you're saying.
We have, and, you know, what we have is, is street opening standards, and our state, our street opening standards mimic what D O T requires. They're based on the volume of traffic, but we can do the same thing, and I guess that's my question to you, do you, before I pursue any further on this, do we wanna make distinctions, or do we want them all, make them all the same? The distinctions would be based on the amount of traffic generated by whatever commercial use is there.
I would rather make them all the same, because, just because you put in a commercial, uh, facility now, that only requires two or three cars, uh, a day, does not mean that that will not upgrade and change at some point in time. I just assume, say, right now, this is the standard it has to meet, and everybody has to meet that standard.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I agree, uh, but what about, uh, what about the, the small, just shock that, that it would be a, a commercial lot? That, uh, would it be hardship for them to go in a twenty-foot line?
It's also, you know, it can also be, looking somewhat unsightly, I mean, if it, if it doesn't have to be that big at any particular time, why do we have to make it that big?
Yeah.
Why not just?
Well, twenty feet's not that.
Well, I would, my, my argument for making it, i- is so that they're all uniform, and there's never a question of what size do I have to have? This is the size that you have to have, it simplifies the entire process to me.
Well, that's why I started off with a range of twenty and twenty-four, but if you wanna make it all twenty or twenty-four, I mean, that's the issue.
I think twenty-four is too big.
Twenty-four is big, um, but you'll find that the, you'll find that the lanes, you'll find that the, let's say, coming out of any of the stores on, uh, in Bedford, are more than twenty-four feet. Think about that, it was intentional.
So is the body tab with the shoulders?
Uh, yeah, I was doing with shoulders, it would probably be.
Four feet.
Yeah, we're talking about twenty feet worth of pavement, and then shoulders on that.
And then the shoulders.
Yeah, then the shoulders.
Yeah.
Okay.
Limerick Road right here, it's probably twenty feet.
Yeah, and it's an arterial.
Yeah.
With no shoulders, really.
Yeah.
If you ever tried to walk along it.
Well.
Not safely.
It's not safe.
Most of the roads like that in town.
Yeah, we have very, very, very small shoulders. All right, what I can do, I mean, we, I, I need direction in which, which way you wanna go, I don't wanna spend too much time, um, you know, doing one system and then having you guys change your mind. If you want me to do variable based on traffic, fine, if you wanna make it all the same standard, terrific, I just need to know which one you wanna do.
See, I, I, I would tend to go with all one standard, because the variable, what do you do if it changes? You're stuck with whatever it was that you said initially, and, and you have no, no room for adaptation at all. So I, I would just as soon say, no, it's, it's that uniform standard, everybody that has a commercial piece of property knows what the size of that driveway has to be.
And you would say twenty, or you'd say twenty-four?
I would say twenty. No, I would say twenty.
I would say twenty, I don't think it should be any bigger than that.
You're thinking of a minimum, what would a minimum be?
Twenty.
Well, actually, I had twenty, and, and what I proposed to you was twenty to twenty-four, it was a plainboard call on that. You guys make this.
See, I would, I would say twenty, twenty is big enough for two fire trucks, going in each direction, one in each direction. So if you needed to get in there, you could get a truck.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
You could do it with eighteen, but it's tight, well, actually, you might not, because of the mirrors.
So if a business wanted to do twenty-four.
They can do it.
They can do it, so it's a, it's a minimum that the focus is on.
Yeah, we could, we could go twenty to twenty-four and leave it up to the business, so you, you have to have a minimum of twenty, and, but if you want.
No more than, I mean, we don't wanna build, at the same time, we don't wanna have landings strips, I mean, because we are trying to have a certain image in this community.
No more than twenty-four.
And then it gets down to pay.
So do you wanna make it no smaller than eighteen and no larger than twenty-four? That at least gives you some ability to make distinctions depending upon the size of the commercial enterprise?
You see, I would, I would go. I would go with twenty to twenty-four, simply because I wanna make sure that the fire trucks can get in there.
Okay, so make it twenty to twenty-four. I, I disagree with that.
All right. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I am, yeah.
Next thing's gonna be pavement.
Of course it has to be paved.
Yeah.
We right now have a seasonal.
Exclusively no shoulders.
We have a seasonal use requirement, which says it doesn't have to be paved if it's not open, uh, during the winter, basically. That's how, that's how, uh, Vinegar Hill operates.
Okay.
That's also how the Farmer's Daughter operates, you know?
Okay, and then I would, I would grant that.
Does that create a problem?
If.
No, I mean, if, if frankly speaking, that's also how, um, um, Raptor Falls operates too.
No, I don't have a problem, I'm not over there.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, as long as, as long as it's understood that if that becomes a year-round business, it must get paved.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a difference between.
So that would be language, Ted, you'd have to put in.
Yep. They can do that.
Yeah.
All right, I will, at the next, by the next. At the next opportunity, I will have that to you guys.
Okay.
Okay?
It's a time limit, right? You know, because you're doing four tens, doesn't mean you can't, you don't, you can't work on Friday.
It literally is a time.
You do two fives.
I can't work on Fridays, except when I give my boss, you know, OT, a time and a half, and he goes, you've already killed our OT budget, you're gonna do more, I don't think so. He would, he won't like that.
He's, he's looking at it going, you know, it wouldn't be bad.
Why can't, what he says is, why can't you do it in forty hours? That's the challenge.
So is that the last, um, item on the agenda?
Uh, I'm gonna bring up one other thing under there, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick my foot in and said, I just, I heard back from, uh, uh, Jeff, uh, Koenig, uh, from, uh, D E P today, about, uh, I sent him our proposed changes to the ordinance, uh, to the shoreline zoning ordinance, the ones that we passed, and he, he liked the, um, he said he'd accept the, uh, criteria for a variance for the S O district, because we're, our S O district is more, um, restrictive than Chapter one thousand. But when we get down to Stream Protection District, we're gonna have a lot, he, he said, you better put some standards in there for that, but, um, that might be a little tougher, because that's a requirement under, what, under Chapter one thousand. So, we, we, we regulate, we regulate forests and wetlands where they don't regulate, but we regulate streams where they regulate streams.
Does that have any implications for current applicants?
Um, yeah. Yeah, it does, um, so, he basically saying, if you're gonna have special exceptions, you better.
Do it.
You better have good criteria to do it, you better, because. And he's not saying, he's not saying he's gonna, he's just saying, if you're gonna have a special exception, you better have criteria, and I need to approve those. Okay, fine, he doesn't have problems with what we have for S O, except those are good. The other, the only thing that he does, he, he's not really happy about, is a reduction of commercial frontage on, on a shoreline zone, which is three hundred feet, which we all agreed was pretty absurd, uh, because number one, we don't have a lot of commercial frontage on what I would consider to be high-value waterfront areas. We only have really two well-identified ones, one is the Kennebuck River, which is an applicable river in sections. Uh, the other one is Brimstone Pond, which technically meets the standards of a great pond, um, it's owned by one family, pretty much, and it is not really a good recreational resource, what about now?
Isn't it, I've never been back to see it, it's pretty much a swamp, right?
Yeah, it's about four feet deep, in, in the deepest part, four to six feet, it's closing in, uh, the.
It's closing?
Oh, yeah, it's, well, it's, you understand that cattails, typhus can, the, the limit for typhus is a three-foot water regime. So, it's at four feet in the deepest parts, so, we're getting to the point where that might get covered. As it silts up, you got hydrox succession here, you know, you got water pouring in, you got sediment pouring in, it eventually does start filling up, as it fills up, it may just lose water, surface water, and not be a great pond anymore. A great pond is defined as being ten acres.
Ten acres, right.
So.
Is there any fish on it?
Probably a pit hole and.
Yeah, Marty.
Who is this complaining?
No one's complaining.
No, what Ted said, what we didn't do, who was?
Oh, that's a, that's the head of the shoreline zoning unit in D E P, who's gonna approve our changes.
Okay, because I couldn't hear you, you were over talking, and I didn't hear the name.
I'm sorry, I've also got this rag on my face.
I would, um, I would almost like to see us take out the special exceptions completely.
We can do that.
That's the ordinance, and there are no exceptions, because that's essentially what the State of Maine is telling us.
Yeah, we're like.
Unless we can come up with some really good definitions and, and rationale as to why we're going to do it. And I think that that's going to be the hard part, we may all have, uh, an understanding of, of what we think it should be, but putting clarity to that, and putting it down on paper, in, in verbiage that would hold up, I think is going to be difficult. So I think it would be much easier just to take special exceptions out completely, there are no special exceptions in the shoreline.
Makes it easier, but there's always special exceptions in anything.
Somebody else can figure out what they are.
Why don't we follow what the State of Maine does?
Because the State, we're, we're, we have standards that are a little higher than the State of Maine, more restricted than the State of Maine. Our standards for short, for, um, streams are more, are, are, uh, more stringent than the State of Maine, um, because we've been.
So how do we avoid, how, how do we avoid an issue? So I don't wanna drag this on too long, but how do we avoid an issue where there seems like there is a loophole? Not that there is, because I guess we have precedent that it's always been a natural factor that has qualified as a special exception, but it could be argued at this point, because the language isn't, uh, specific enough, you know, one could argue that, that, um, something like what's happening at Raymond Acres could conceivably be considered a special exception, which is why I'm thinking that we, you know, at least my thinking is, in my opinion, I would reject the application and let it go to the Z B A and see what they decide, as opposed to, you know, trying to fudge our, the ordinance and the interpretation of what a special exception is.
Well, I don't, I don't think we should discuss the Raymond Acres one, but I understand what you're saying, I think we can.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm speaking of them as an example, but in, in more general terms.
Right.
Uh, if something like this comes up again.
Wish you will.
And it's a man-made issue.
We will, we will see it again, and, and that's, that's one of the reasons, I think, because how are we going to be able to clarify all of the things that could qualify for a special exception? The sun came up in the east, therefore it's a special exception, and you didn't mention it in the ordinance, therefore, since it wasn't mentioned, we should allow it. I think we should simply say, there are no special exceptions.
I think it's all depends, that, that's what we're doing originally, I think on the flip side, at, at the same time, the planning board, if it is very clear about what the goal is in doing these, these environmental regulations, and specifying under what circumstances a pre-existing condition might qualify. I think if you.
Okay.
If you did that, then, then if somebody makes a mistake, that's not a special exception, you're a pre-existing. If you have a pre-existing water, a pre-existing condition, then, then you could, that, that might be a basis on which to do it, which is what we did with Zoo, quite frankly.
Yeah.
That was a pre-existing lot with a pre-existing building envelope, and we changed, and the ordinance became stricter. And the ordinance didn't exist when it was done.
Marty, you had something?
Yeah, what are the, the state standards are less than ours.
Right.
What would happen if we followed the state standards?
Well, we would have very, what would be really interesting, oh, boy, do I wanna get into this, um, the bigger state standard that we have right now, um, pertaining to what we're talking about, the application we've got is, we, we basically have extended what the state regulates for streams. Um, the state says any part of a blue line on a, on a seven-and-a-half-minute quad, any, any of the land below the confluence of two tributaries is regulated, that's about as arbitrary as you can possibly get, because, uh, it, it means you could take, like, say, a river, and the first two tributaries come in, the rest of the watershed's not covered, and, and that's why, I wish Jamie was here, because he, well, actually, you guys were here, remember we had this debate? And, and, and we said, look, we have a lot of wetlands in the town of Long Island, we're flooded, because we gotta have so much clay in them here. Our bigger, our biggest concern is that, not that we have large piping plover areas or waiting berth habitat, we don't. What we have is, we have some important streams that feed into the Kennebuck River, and we have some huge wet, water sheds that feed into the Kennebuck River, and, uh, our real concern is surface water, not so much wetlands as much as in its surface water, you remember having this discussion? And what we're finding out right now, gentlemen, I might as well approach you now, Rich, is, um, Kennebuck River Study, I, I mentioned this at our last meeting, Kennebuck River Study, I'm on that committee, Steerage Hall, has done water tests, and they've done water testing in the Kennebuck River, it's trying to find sources of pollution and nutrient buildup that are causing Kennebuck River to be rated as class C waters, substandard waters. What we found out is there's two major hotspots along the river, at least the testing has revealed this. We're doing some more testing right now, but they are basically Gosmo Brook and Duck Duck Brook. Not Illwif Brook, not the areas up in Lyman, it's us, those two brooks are the hotspots, we have coliform problems. And we have some other problems in there, too, we have nutrient buildup problems.
We do, and septic systems?
Probably, it's not animal, they tested for animal versus human, and this was done this past summer, last summer, and they're doing some more tests now, in fact, I got a meeting with them next week, a Zoom meeting, which, uh, we're gonna go over this, but I will tell you this, the, the next. The next phase will be, they'll finish the study, they'll identify those two brooks, and, and the Duck Brook one starts all the way up to the top. I mean, we got a hotspot up, up there, Hissong's, but it's not where Hissong's doing any work. So, where the heck, and that's why.
Which Hissong facility?
Bartle Farms.
Which?
Bartle Farms too.
Okay.
But where, where they show the testing site is not where there's any development. They have it developed down that section there. So, we said, I said, is it dead animal? Yeah, they said, no, it's human. I said, dead human? Said, no, it's caliform. Oh, jeez. Um, and it continues down. There's another hotspot, the tributary, the western tributary that comes, you think, from Liberty Acres. Those septic systems are probably fifty years old.
Liberty Acres is up at the top of Limerick Road.
Yeah, it's where, it's where we were, uh, this evening.
Yeah.
Right, where Maplewood is.
Yeah.
It's, well, yeah, it's, it's, it's right across the street from Maplewood, it goes up, it's a, it goes up to.
Parallel to New Road.
Parallels New Road, yeah.
Duck is, uh, Duck Brook is the one that winds behind MG Lane.
Yeah, it's the one we just did with, uh, with Walter Woods at Oak Ridge Terrace.
Not far from DuBois, right?
What's the flow?
It's a different watershed.
Is the flow east or is it west?
It flows, it basically flows southwest.
Yeah.
Towards Kennebunk River. It goes in the Kennebunk River.
Okay, so flowing away from one-eleven towards.
If you go down Downing Road, but down around the corner, you've got to cross the bridge, that's Duck Brook.
The gap, the, uh, pipeline or the eastern trail?
And it runs all the way down, it joins up.
Once it gets there?
Down there to the turnpike.
Yeah, and you go along there, there's, there's a.
There's Duck Brook.
Okay.
And it comes into the Kennebunk River.
Af- after the, uh, the, the new development, which, um, it comes into, um.
Goes under Downing Road.
Under Downing Road.
Goes beyond Rich's house, goes under Downing Road, um, that, that big project that we did down there, you know, that crossing. And then goes, winds into what is now, um, uh, well, what was, what was the name of that farm? Trying to remember. Anyways, it goes along, it parallels, um, it's all native, it's grown up land, it basically parallels the eastern trail until crosses over to that stone bridge.
Yeah.
And then goes into the Kennebunk River, goes right into the Kennebunk River down there. So.
So, should we consider rewriting or adding, uh, some more specificity to what a special exception is and leave it at that? Rather than eliminating it altogether?
Those, those are the two options. We have it very specific in terms of what we want a special circumstance to be. Or we do it the easy way and we just say, no, there are no special circumstances.
Well, you're saying it has to be environmental, or it has to be natural, or it can't be man-made, or?
I'd concur with Ted.
I don't know.
And, and I'm fine going either way. I really am. I just, as long as we understand if we're going to get specific, it's a lot more drawn out and a lot longer process than it would be to simply say there are no special circumstances.
Requires more brainstorming.
It does.
Yeah, it requires, it requires the, the planning board to be more judge, be more of a judge.
That's the function.
That's your function, is to make a decision whether this is, and you're, and you're gonna balance, you're gonna balance people's economic condition or financial hardship versus environmental impact.
I, I would throw out the special circumstance, yes, it has to be an environmental impact for one, but for two, it cannot be something that the applicant caused to happen. It must be a pre-existing condition of the site, not something that the applicant did that resulted in having to request a special circumstance.
Did or failed to do.
Yeah.
With cause to know better.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't disagree with that.
And that, that's where the verbiage would come in. I have no idea about making it, making any of that stuff.
I think that's where the state would come into it too, because, you know, the state is, states look, I don't think they feel real, real comfortable, but they like what we had done with the SO district that we own. I got no, no flack from them on that at all. What I got flack for was eliminating three-hundred-foot shore frontage requirement for a commercial lot.
Yeah, but they're, they're not really zeroing in on what, uh, around those particular situation is with that. That was just a knee-jerk reaction generally, I'll bet.
Yeah, well, he, he, he may make me do it. He may make, what we'll do is we'll still pass it, and then we'll have to go back and fix it. Because I told him I'm not pulling it. He says, then I'm not gonna approve it, all right? There you go. Because I'll do, I'll pull, I'll, I'll put the three-hundred back in.
You're ready there, Marty?
We're making it two-hundred now. We're going from three-hundred to two-hundred. And the assumption is that you're putting a commercial facility on a, um, a recreational water feature. Like a lakefront or a riverfront.
Yeah, and it's just not applicable.
It's not applicable. Maybe riverfront, but not, I.
The dad's touching it.
Even, I have a three-hundred-foot stretch of land in a commercial district along the Kennebunk River.
Except for the well, they said.
And then the Gulf Coast doesn't.
Gulf Coast, yeah.
And that's actually in our form.
Yeah.
Yeah, Marty?
Question is, does Duck Brook or whatever, does that come off of Clearview Estates through there? Because at one time, that was owned and supposedly was farmland. Uh, could that been free deposits before it was developed?
Uh, you know, that, that's a very good question, Marty, and I asked the same thing, and they said the biologics wouldn't survive. It's not, it's not an old, it's not an artifact. It is an existing condition, which means we got, we've got pollution occurring.
Yeah, it's ongoing.
Yeah, it's ongoing, it's, yeah, and, well, at least the test showed that. We'll see if the new tests confirm that. That's why I really wanna see what's happening.
Has there been an examination of the properties along Duck Brook?
No, that's, that's the next step. What, what I anticipate will happen is be the same thing we did with Thatcher Brook. What will happen is that we'll probably go to the next level, which will be a remediation study. And what we can identify in the problem, coming up with a plan to remediate the problem to improve the water quality, which is what we did in Thatcher Brook and, and Richardson Brook. Now, our role in that was very small because, but frankly, we weren't a problem. It was Bennetford that was the problem of those. We made a bigger district that we actually, we never even regulated those streams until we did this change in the shoreline zoning. And we made that a hundred-foot setback instead of seventy-five-foot setback, and that made everybody at DEP happy. In this, we're gonna be a, a little more targeted, and the money made that we might be asking for would be for identifying the problems and then coming up with a remedial plan. The third thing will be funding the remedial plan. So this is, this is, this is what grantsmanship's all about, guys. Um, we're not doing it. It's Wells Reserve that's doing it. And I, my gut feeling is, if we are that problem, we will want to fix that so we don't be, we're not identified as a DEP urban imperative watershed, which then causes new problems. Because that would bring in fishing law, and I don't want them here. You don't want them here. Because they'll start talking about changing residential culvert sizes and, I mean, gravel bottoms and everything and so forth, so.
So that gives us an impetus to define what special exception is so we don't contribute down the road to some of the issues that are occurring right now in Gosbrook and Duck Brook. So, you know, we probably just need to figure out what language, if any, we're gonna add or we're gonna eliminate special exception altogether and make it discretionary or.
Right.
Yeah, I do, I, I'm not a big fan of discretionary because it's too easy to say, well, yeah, you know, Susan's my friend, and I don't wanna do her harm.
Yeah, and I don't wanna make it discretionary either. I'm just saying, if you eliminate the, the language altogether, then does that naturally occur?
But I, I would look at it and say, I wouldn't eliminate the language altogether. I would look at it and, and say, state straight up front, there are no special exceptions. One line.
Unless?
No, there are no special exceptions. If we say unless, then we have to go through and define what all of that is and, and.
Well, so you said, if it was a pre-existing condition on the lot, or if it was some other environmental factor that we haven't thought of, but that it can't be as a result of the landowners' activities on the lot?
Yeah, we, yeah, and we can go through and we can come up with that, and we can, and, and definitely say that it has to be environmental in nature and, and clarify what all of that stuff happens to be. And, and that's fine. I mean, I don't care if we go through and do it that way or if we go through and say, there are no special exceptions.
We may find that.
Right, and think about it.
If we go through.
You mean no crystal ball?
No, Marty, I don't have a crystal ball, which is why.
So we don't have no crystal balls under the special exception?
Well, that's, yeah, that's one way of looking at it. Ted?
I think we could take a stab at it. I think we're, I think we're bound to take a stab at it because, um, what we thought would be a simple decision-making process were faced with a current application, it's not so simple.
Yeah, so.
You know, it's not so simple. It's not as cut and dry as we all thought it was.
It, it would probably behoove us to take a stab at it.
Yeah.
And document the process that we're, we've gone through, and then if we get to the point where we just can't, we're struggling under it for whatever reason, then we could say, okay, fine, we gave it our best shot, now we'll just say, okay, there aren't any. I think we could probably come up with, with some good stuff. I don't think we're gonna be able to identify, uh, to any certainty all of the variables that may come across, but we can list out a, a great many of, of the, um, initial variables that everything may fall under.
We gotta consider not fact patterns, we gotta consider principles.
Yeah.
Yes.
You can make it generally specific, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
It's, it's oxymoronic.
As opposed to specifically general?
I like specifically general.
Let me fight this a little more.
All right.
Getting late.
Act was.
It is late, enough to perform.
All right.
Oh, my goodness.
Motion adjourned.
What was that?
My second.
Hold on, I've stopped taking notes a long time ago, maybe that started.
Uh, Tom made the motion to adjourn, Yan seconded.
Time.
You can go home now.
It is now nine forty-two, and we are done.
Supper time.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you, Susan.
See you next time.
Thank you for struggling through this. I'll convert this, yeah, I'll convert this to an MP4.
Thanks, get it to me. I love those MP4s. It takes half the time of recording, mind you. I do a W, I, I have to use a WBM format, which is, it's like using a brownie can.
Oh, yeah.
To take care of the photos.
Might have worked.
I'm not sure I'd say the words.
And, and you're not sure if those people really are in the audience. It's awful, really. And it takes like three hours to upload it to, to YouTube. You know, if you forget that you're uploading it and you accidentally close the Chrome, you're screwed, you have to start all over. So awful, I hate it. Yeah, that's, I guess I'm gonna have to edit this too.